All right, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular city council meeting for August, or August, October 7th of 2025. Do we have a report from closed session, Mr. Splendario?
Thank you, Mayor. There is no reportable action.
All right, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone could please join us for a silent prayer followed by the flex salute. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, October 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item F. Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do we have any this evening? No? Okay. Moving on to item G, presentations. The first presentation this evening will be the Officer Graywall Freeway Resolution Presentation by Cooper Condit, District Director for Assemblyman Flora's Office.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here today on behalf of Assemblyman Heath Flora, who had the distinct honor of authoring this resolution for Officer Graywall and his family. I want to thank his father and sister for being here today, and I'd like to present this bill, number 21 of 2025, to the family.
We will stand up front and take the customary picture, but I wanted to thank Mr. Condit and the Assemblymember's Office, who now I understand he's the minority leader for the Assembly. So I know they're extremely busy, and it's taken a lot of work to get this Assembly bill through, which authorized Caltrans to produce the sign and install the sign on 99, which is going to go from the city limits down into Acampo at the request of the family based on the area of the freeway that's available. As you know, we already have a freeway sign for Kevin Ton here in Galt proper. So that process is ongoing. It is in the hands of Caltrans, but this is the first step that actually gets this moving. And so I want to thank the Council and even prior councils who've been involved in this from time to time to get this going. But I know the Assemblymember's Office has been swamped, fighting the good fight on behalf of the residents of Galt and the district. And so on behalf of the Galt Police Department and the Graywall family, I want to thank the Assemblymember and the Council for supporting this. Thank you.
He's got another phone for you.
It's okay. We're kind of in the picture. I mean, except for maybe, yeah. Does any of the Council have a comment they'd like to make? All right, well, on behalf of the City Council of Galt, myself, I would do want to, if you could please thank Assemblyman Flora for doing this. We appreciate it. I know it's been a long process. We've been on this for many years, actually, to get it over the goal line, or at least close to the goal line. So thank you, Chief, for all your work on this and everybody else involved. So thank you. All right, our second presentation this evening is going to be item G2, which is Homelessness and Housing System Partnership Model. That's going to be presented by Emily Howkin, hopefully I said your name right, Director, and Siobhan Kathery.
Kathary.
Kathary, yeah. Guys hit me with some tough names. Who's the Deputy County Executive.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. My name's Emily Howkin. I am the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing with Sacramento County. And as the Mayor said, I'm here today with some colleagues. And we have Supervisor Pat Hume here, County Executive David Villanueva, and Deputy County Executive Siobhan Kathary. I'm going to be doing the majority of the talking, but they're also, of course, happy to answer any questions or provide any support. So I do have a brief PowerPoint. Please feel free to stop me. I'm going to try to get through this so there's time for input and conversation with the Council. And so I want to start by just acknowledging, addressing homelessness is a really complex issue. I'm sure you guys grapple with this as elected members as well as residents of this community. The causes of homelessness and the impacts of homelessness is very varied depending on where you live and your station in life, and there is no single solution. And so just as the individual needs vary amongst the homeless population, we also recognize that the people working in this space, inclusive of those like myself in government, our nonprofit partners, advocates, faith community businesses, et cetera, all have different priorities and capabilities to add to this solution area. However, one thing that we pretty consistently hear at the county, and I'm presuming that you may as well, is that there's a desire for more transparency in our work and that we bring forward actions that reflect an urgency for this complex issue. With homeless numbers rising in recent years in the county, the community is really looking more and more towards local elected officials to take bold actions and to more directly oversee the work that's happening in community. And there is fragmentation as decisions are made here by multiple boards. Some of them are elected, some are appointed, and while the staff amongst these different organizations work very, very well together, at the end of the day, we're responding to different policy direction depending on where we sit. So tonight I'm here to just share with you a potential model about how we might rethink how we approach this work together. Importantly, this model seeks to retain local jurisdictional control of existing funding that you might oversee for both homelessness and housing. It also seeks to preserve land use decisions, which we understand are very critical, but creates a very purposeful space for local elected leaders to really drive that policy direction and set strategic vision on how we might comprehensively address homelessness. And this includes not just delivering critical services, but braiding diverse funding sources and integrating those efforts with the localized things that we do every day on space management, law enforcement, and other areas that impact this work. County staff have been working with your staff, including the interim city manager, over the past few months to get their input and thoughts. And so tonight, we're really here to seek your input. We're not asking for any final decisions, but to get your high-level input so we can combine it with input we've heard from the other cities and then come back for some final decisions, if that's the direction we want to go. On the side. Oh, the one on the side, not the one on the top.
No, you're going to slide it up.
I've got to, thank you, sorry.
You gotta turn it on.
Oh, there.
We see batteries around here.
There, thank you so much. First task. So before I discuss the proposed changes, I'm going to try to give a very high level and very brief history to try to help understand of how we got here where we are. I want to recognize and understand that I live very deeply in this world, and most people don't. And so trying to sort of provide some context in the course of one slide and maybe two minutes may not be sufficient, so please stop me and ask any questions you might want. Central to the history of how we address homelessness is the concept of a continuum of care, or COC, which many consider, rightfully so, the backbone of the homeless system of care. COCs are really a function of federal government, but only came to be in 1994. And that's a relatively short history when you think of other social services and how local governments have been engaged. And really, COCs were born out of grassroots organizations working in community, and then the federal government came in and sort of started to adopt some of their practices and trying to use that as a method to coalesce not just grassroots organizations, but governmental organizations. And so while local government, especially county government, certainly has always had a role in delivering homeless services, it was only about 10 years ago, if you sort of jump ahead in my very short timeline, that you start seeing a more localized and state involvement in this. This is both the creation of departments such as myself. It's not odd now to see that large cities and counties throughout California have dedicated departments grappling only with this issue, but that is somewhat of a new phenomenon. And you also started seeing, just in 2019, the state of California really starting to invest in this issue with the creation of what we call the HAPF funds, the Homeless Housing Assistance Program. And so today, it's only been about 30 years since we started down this path with COCs, but where we are in terms of the funding, in terms of the crisis, really has changed, and we haven't really revisited if this is the structure that makes sense in today. So a little bit more about COCs. It is very wonky, but I think it's critical, and some of the conversation you're going to hear in community is really going to center around the COC and some of these changes that would impact the COC.
Streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, October 10th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 11th at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrolcable14.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item F. Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do we have any this evening? No? Okay. Moving on to item G, presentations. The first presentation this evening will be the Officer Graywall Freeway Resolution Presentation by Cooper Condit, District Director for Assemblyman Flora's Office.
I'm here today on behalf of Assemblyman Heath Flora, who had the distinct honor of authoring this resolution for Officer Graywall and his family. I want to thank his father and sister for being here today, and I'd like to present this bill, number 21 of 2025, to the family.
We will stand up front and take the customary picture, but I wanted to thank Mr. Condit and the Assemblymember's Office, who now I understand he's the minority leader for the Assembly. So I know they're extremely busy, and it's taken a lot of work to get this Assembly bill through, which authorized Caltrans to produce the sign and install the sign on 99, which is going to go from the city limits down into Acampo at the request of the family based on the area of the freeway that's available. As you know, we already have a freeway sign for Kevin Ton here in Galt proper. So that process is ongoing. It is in the hands of Caltrans, but this is the first step that actually gets this moving. And so I want to thank the Council and even prior councils who've been involved in this from time to time to get this going. But I know the Assemblymember's Office has been swamped, fighting the good fight on behalf of the residents of Galt and the district. And so on behalf of the Galt Police Department and the Graywall family, I want to thank the Assemblymember and the Council for supporting this. Thank you.
It's okay. We're kind of in the picture. I mean, except for maybe, yeah. Does any of the council have a comment they'd like to make? All right, well, on behalf of the City Council of Galt and myself, I would do want to, if you could please thank Assemblyman Flora for doing this. We appreciate it. I know it's been a long process. We've been on this for many years, actually, to get it over the goal line, or at least close to the goal line. So thank you, Chief, for all your work on this and everybody else involved. So, thank you. All right, our second presentation this evening is going to be item G2, which is Homelessness and Housing System Partnership Model. That's going to be presented by Emily Halken. Hopefully I said your name right. Director, and Siobhan Kathery.
Kathary.
Kathary, yeah. Guys hit me with some tough names. Who's the Deputy County Executive.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me. My name's Emily Halken. I am the Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing with Sacramento County. And as the mayor said, I'm here today with some colleagues. And we have Supervisor Pat Hume here, County Executive David Villanueva, and Deputy County Executive Siobhan Kathary. I'm going to be doing the majority of the talking, but they're also, of course, happy to answer any questions or provide any support. So I do have a brief PowerPoint. Please feel free to stop me. I'm going to try to get through this so there's time for input and conversation with the Council. And so I want to start by just acknowledging, addressing homelessness is a really complex issue. I'm sure you guys grapple with this as elected members as well as residents of this community. The causes of homelessness and the impacts of homelessness is very varied, depending on where you live and your station in life, and there is no single solution. And so just as the individual needs vary amongst the homeless population, we also recognize that the people working in this space, inclusive of those like myself in government, our nonprofit partners, advocates, faith community businesses, et cetera, all have different priorities and capabilities to add to this solution area. However, one thing that we pretty consistently hear at the county, and I'm presuming that you may as well, is that there's a desire for more transparency in our work and that we bring forward actions that reflect an urgency for this complex issue. With homeless numbers rising in recent years in the county, the community is really looking more and more towards local elected officials to take bold actions and to more directly oversee the work that's happening in community. And there is fragmentation as decisions are made here by multiple boards. Some of them are elected, some are appointed, and while the staff amongst these different organizations work very, very well together, at the end of the day, we're responding to different policy direction depending on where we sit. So tonight I'm here to just share with you a potential model about how we might rethink how we approach this work together. Importantly, this model seeks to retain local jurisdictional control of existing funding that you might oversee for both homelessness and housing. It also seeks to preserve land use decisions, which we understand are very critical, but creates a very purposeful space for local elected leaders to really drive that policy direction and set strategic vision on how we might comprehensively address homelessness. And this includes not just delivering critical services, but braiding diverse funding sources and integrating those efforts with the localized things that we do every day on space management, law enforcement, and other areas that impact this work. County staff have been working with your staff, including the interim city manager, over the past few months to get their input and thoughts. And so tonight, we're really here to seek your input. We're not asking for any final decisions, but to get your high-level input so we can combine it with input we've heard from the other cities and then come back for some final decisions, if that's the direction we want to go. On the side. Oh, the one on the side, not the one on the top.
No, you're going to slide it up.
I've got to, thank you, sorry.
You gotta turn it on.
Oh, there.
We see batteries around here.
There, thank you so much. First task. So before I discuss the proposed changes, I'm going to try to give a very high level and very brief history to try to help understand of how we got here where we are. I want to recognize and understand that I live very deeply in this world, and most people don't. And so trying to sort of provide some context in the course of one slide and maybe two minutes may not be sufficient, so please stop me and ask any questions you might want. Central to the history of how we address homelessness is the concept of a continuum of care, or COC, which many consider, rightfully so, the backbone of the homeless system of care. COCs are really a function of federal government, but only came to be in 1994. And that's a relatively short history when you think of other social services and how local governments have been engaged. And really, COCs were born out of grassroots organizations working in community, and then the federal government came in and sort of started to adopt some of their practices and trying to use that as a method to coalesce not just grassroots organizations, but governmental organizations. And so while local government, especially county government, certainly has always had a role in delivering homeless services, it was only about 10 years ago, if you sort of jump ahead in my very short timeline, that you start seeing a more localized and state involvement in this. This is both the creation of departments such as myself. It's not odd now to see that large cities and counties throughout California have dedicated departments grappling only with this issue, but that is somewhat of a new phenomenon. And you also started seeing, just in 2019, the state of California really starting to invest in this issue with the creation of what we call the HAPF funds, the Homeless Housing Assistance Program. And so today, it's only been about 30 years since we started down this path with COCs, but where we are in terms of the funding, in terms of the crisis, really has changed, and we haven't really revisited if this is the structure that makes sense in today. So a little bit more about COCs, it is very wonky, but I think it's critical, and some of the conversation you're going to hear in community is really going to center around the COC and some of these changes that would impact the COC. So in federal statute, the organization and responsibilities of continuum of care is laid out in general that they have to have three components. They have to have a broad, large membership that can be loosely defined. It can just be anybody who raises their hand and says, "I care about homelessness, and I want to engage with people in the community who care about homelessness." In some communities, it's a more defined group, but it's a very large, very diverse, often changing group of folks. The second part in federal statute is you have to have a COC board. This is oftentimes an appointed board that is intended to make administrative decisions around the COC responsibilities, which I should say the COC responsibilities in federal statute are also very defined. Basically, it's overseeing federal funds that come through an annual NOFO process, as well as overseeing the point-in-time count, which hopefully you're familiar with, and overseeing the homeless management information system, which is our database that we're required to maintain on people participating in programs. And then the final component in federal statute is you have to have a collaborative applicant and an HMIS lead. This is really the administrative arm doing the work for the COC. In many communities, and actually in Sacramento County, it used to be in county government. Up until 2011, the county of Sacramento was the collaborative applicant. That switched in our community to Sacramento Steps Forward, who is a nonprofit in 2011, and they retain that responsibility today. And so while in federal statute, on the left-hand side, I described the three distinct components, in our local implementation, we actually only have two distinctions. We do not have a separation of the COC membership and the COC board. That doesn't have a huge impact, but what that means is that we have a very large board of about 32 people, which is making decisions, which is convening, and doesn't really have that connection to this broader membership that you see in other continuums of care. And most importantly, while the COC board and its membership provides direction related to those very specific COC functions, as you know, local elected bodies, I'm sure yourself included, are where the community is likely to come if they have an issue or a challenge or need related to homelessness. So with that history and a little bit of federal landscape, I want to shift back to our community and the efforts that we've been working on. As we've been facing not only a rise in homelessness over the past few years, especially unsheltered homelessness, the expectations from the community really have shifted. There certainly is a strong and continued interest, I believe, from the community in ensuring that we're providing robust and diverse services to individuals experiencing homelessness. But there's also just as equal of an interest and expectation that we address the unintended impacts of unsheltered homelessness to our broader community, to the businesses, to the residents. And federal and state policy is similarly shifting. We've been required, as receiving funds from the state and the federal government, that we closer connect the work that we're doing with individuals experiencing homelessness with how we engage the broader community, with our street management activities, which those are very localized decisions. And as we see these shifts and potentially cuts at the federal level, there's also the need to be more thoughtful about how we braid these homeless funding with other social service funds. And most of those funds, things like child welfare, behavioral health, live in the county. And so in December of 2023, as a result of some of these conversations happening locally, the county and Sacramento Steps Forward hired a consultant to provide some considerations for us of how we might want to think about this model differently. After working with the continuum of care, staff from the city of Sacramento and the county presented this recommendation to our Board of Supervisors in August. Following that workshop, the board asked that we go out to all the cities and receive similar input to then bring back to the board and have a deliberative conversation about next steps. So hopefully you have this in your packet, because I recognize this is very difficult to read on the screen, but I'm going to try to walk through. This is the model, as we have proposed, definitely open to lots of input. So currently, as I said, we have a COC board in our community that is consists entirely of non-elected community members. We also have a homeless policy council. I believe the mayor participated in it over time, which consists almost exclusively of elected members, but doesn't have any authority or decision-making. This model attempts to merge those two concepts, the elected policy council without decision-making authority with the appointed COC board that does have some decision-making authority, merge them together, and really elevate the responsibility of those two entities and rethink membership so that we can have a body that's more strategic as well as directive. So I'm going to really quickly just walk through the components here, but certainly ask questions. So at the very top in the red are the seven elected, the current, I'm sorry, eight current elected bodies in Sacramento County. We are not proposing any changes to any of the authorities that you hold as a city council, nor are we adding any additional responsibilities, just as virtue of participating. Below the red body in what is kind of transparent purple is intended to capture that broader COC membership. This is where community members, activists, social justice partners, providers of services would engage in this sort of community conversation around the vision we want to see. This is a loose group of folks, but we would like them to be more participatory in this work. Within that purple continuum of care, because it is a more nebulous body, it's not a membership roster, it's a nebulous body of folks who are interested in this. We think that the work of the COC would then be pulled closer with the work that's happening in communities, often by local governments. That's things like operating shelters, administering vouchers with our housing authority, encampment management that happens in partnership with our law enforcement. And that work would happen in the two boxes in yellow and green. So in yellow is what we're proposing as the Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board. This would be the new body. This is, they would be serving both as a COC board, as well as the board to establish a strategic vision for our community, to set regional goals, performance targets, and funding priorities. In this model, the Homeless and Housing Board is primarily composed of elected officials from the various bodies throughout the county, but they are advised and engaged actively with the broader COC membership through the subcommittees, which are shown here in green. So in green, we're envisioning a series of subcommittees. These could be subcommittees that are topically based, like we want to have one to focus on shelters. There could be ad hoc committees where you say, "We need to plan for the point-in-time count. We need to have a small working body." But this wouldn't be seated by members of the COC board, a diverse membership that could include providers of services, business leaders, faith leaders, et cetera, et cetera. And they would be tasked with doing the work and advising back up to the Homeless and Housing Board. Below the purple box in blue is what we're calling the Strategic Leadership Group. This is really comprised of decision-making staff of the various organizations who are doing this work. So this would be probably myself from the county, various staff from the cities, staff of the continuum of care, lead applicant, et cetera. And then in the gray bubble over to the left, which doesn't show up very well here, but hopefully it does in your printed version, we are acknowledging that there's work to be done. This doesn't just happen because we designed it on a nice little slide. There is work and staffing to be done to pull all this together. We haven't currently defined who that "who" is, but I do want to be clear, we're not asking for any sort of funding or participation from staff of the other cities. It might make sense, as we form this, we get a consultant onboard for the first year or two to sort of get us going, and then determine what the best staffing structure makes sense. The other thing I do want to emphasize here, because it's been asked at most of the other councils, is that this model does not envision changing the role currently of Sacramento Steps Forward. They serve as our lead agency administering the COC functions. In this model, they would be pulled in with more direct direction from the electeds in our community through the Homeless and Housing Board versus reporting directly to a COC board. Should we want to, as a community, change the lead applicant and not have it be Sacramento Steps Forward, or pick another nonprofit, or move it to another form of government, that decision can be made by the Homeless and Housing Board, but we're not recommending that that be done at the time of formation here. As I noted earlier and almost done here, in federal statute, the COC board, our current board is about 32 people, only has some very loose requirements. We are required that the membership be representative of relevant organizations who work to address homelessness, and that at least one member has lived experience of homelessness. But how large that COC board is, how large the COC board is, and how you establish and seat those positions is completely locally determined. And so because of that, if you've seen one of COC in the community, you've seen one COC. I have read countless charters and bylaws, and virtually every COC is composed a little bit differently. That means creating a new vision is more challenging. We tend to look towards direction from the federal government. Here's sort of how the composition should look, and we don't have that in this. So it really gives a lot of flexibility to us. Our proposal that we've been working with the board on is, as I said, that the Homeless and Housing Board would serve in part as the COC board, but also have a whole bunch of other functions. In such, we have heard a desire from the Board of Supervisors and from other city councils that there's a desire not just to elevate the participation by having elected officials who have the accountability to the public, who have a level of transparency that you tend to not see in other appointed boards, but also strive to keep this board small so that it can be action-oriented. I sit currently on the COC board. I'm one of 32. It's a very dynamic group, but it is very difficult sometimes to make decisions and be strategic when you have 31 other voices. So there are two proposals presented here on this slide, but the actual compositions are endless. This is just sort of two we're throwing out. We'd love to hear if you have other thoughts. In terms of elected representation, we are recommending up to 10 elected officials, depending on which jurisdictions choose to participate. That would get you two members of the Board of Supervisors, two members from the Sacramento City Council, and one from the remaining six city councils, should they all want to participate. That's how you get to 10. It also includes, option A also includes up to one seat for a person with lived experience that is mandated by federal statute. Option B, on the other hand, proposes up to 15 members. Again, those 10 electeds, the one member with lived experience, and then up to four community seats that could be chosen at the discretion of the board. That could be a business leader, somebody from law enforcement, healthcare. You could think about what activities and what representation makes the most sense. And again, this could be many more. Like I said, we have a 32-member board today. I've seen some COCs up to 40. It's sort of a give-and-take of how inclusive and broad do you want versus how action-oriented do you want. So we are definitely looking for your input on this. But in either structure, I do want to emphasize that we are really committed to retaining community voice through a structured subcommittee process. So one of the concerns we have heard from the existing COC is that by having this be primarily elected, community voice is lost. What I would say is that right now, the community voice is limited only to COC functions. This model would elevate community voice where they could sit on a subcommittee. For example, maybe we have a subcommittee of law enforcement and how we work in encampments. That's not a space that the COC currently works in. So I think that there's a give-and-take here where community voice might not have a vote in the same way they do today, but they'd have a lot more action and voice in matters broader than just the COC. So really quickly, the last two slides just detail some of the roles of the proposed board. We envision that this board, unlike the existing homeless policy council, have very public, open meetings, they comply with the Brown Act, that this body would be key in establishing a strategic plan and a vision for our community around homelessness and housing, and then, of course, acting as a COC board. They'll develop performance targets for programs, they will set a vision for how we use and analyze and share data as a community. Some of the specific actions that the Sacramento Homeless and Housing Board might take, should we form them in the way I described, is that they would include monitoring what is called the Regionally Coordinated Homelessness Action Plan. And this is a plan that exists today, but currently only the city of Sacramento, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and the COC board are mandated to engage with this and adopt it. So the smaller jurisdictions are unfortunately left out. This is a space where that board would bring your voices into this regional plan and allow us to be more broad in how we think about this. We also would see that this board would be able to establish performance goals and data reports. Should there be new funds from the federal government or the state government, the COC would be recipient of those, and this board would set priorities for new HAPF funds or new COC funds. And of course, this board would oversee, more directly oversee, the work of the lead applicant who currently is Sacramento Steps Forward. So just finally, next steps and sort of timing of where we're at. Next week, we will have met with virtually all of the city councils by the end of next week, seeking input from them on whether this makes sense, given their priorities, how they might want to participate, if there's different ways they might see themselves in this. Given that input, we plan to go back to the Board of Supervisors to summarize what we've heard, and then pull together the staff of the various participating entities to develop MOUs or partnership agreements, however we want to codify this relationship, with a goal that, this is a little bit ambitious, but that potentially the new board could be seated as soon as quarter two of 2026, and really start driving home some of these goals that I was discussing. So with that, thank you for giving me the time, and I'd love to hear any input or take any questions.
Thank you. And I'll make sure I pronounce your name. It's Ms. Halken.
Halken.
Halken, okay.
It's fine, yes.
All right, thank you for the presentation. So you're looking for input from us, basically is what I'm hearing, right?
Yes.
So I'll start with a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the lead agencies, or the lead, I guess, lack of a better word, an agency is the Sacramento Steps Forward?
Yes.
Okay, and that organization is, describe them real quickly for me.
They're wholly independent, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and they have other functions as a nonprofit, but their main function is to serve as the collaborative applicant for the COC. They also administer our homeless management information system, which is our database.
Okay, so their duties currently as the lead is to do what?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So they have some very specific duties as COC lead, so they oversee the annual competition for COC funds. That's about $40 million a year. I do want to put a big asterisk, is that most of that money goes to continuing existing programs. It's not $40 million of new funds. So they administer the funding application every year. They do some grant management and monitoring for the recipients of those grant awards. They have to plan and administer the point-in-time count every two years. They oversee the coordinated access system, which is the way that folks experiencing homelessness access services. And then they oversee the homeless management information system, the database I was describing, mostly to provide reporting up to the federal government.
So just in layman's terms, basically, you guys have designated them as kind of like the person in charge of kind of delegating those, I mean, this is who you're looking to for help with this big problem?
Yeah, I think that that is definitely fair, probably at the time that the county shifted lead agency in 2011 to them. What has happened, though, since then is now the county has a whole department, the city of Sacramento has a whole department. We have more funds run through my department than through the COC. So now we sort of have lots of players, which is great, it's more resources, but it's a little bit less diluted.
And how long have they been, that lead agency?
Since 2011.
Okay. Well, the first thing that came to my mind was that, I mean, 2011, you know, it's 14 years ago, and you said homelessness has increased significantly over the last few years. So clearly, to me, like whatever agency or whoever's in charge isn't doing a good work. I mean, I just hate to say that bluntly, but like, that's just the first thing that popped in my mind. What I see here, I was on the homeless policy council for a short time with the other mayors, including Mayor Steinberg and some others, and the perception I got, and if you're looking for input, this is just my input, there's four of us here, or there's five of us here, so they can speak, but, I mean, we're a small city. We obviously probably have a small homeless problem compared to other of our neighboring cities, but we have one nonetheless. But what I felt on that committee is that every idea, everything was always, it was always like triage mode. It's like, how do we deal with things on the backend? How can we get more money, or how can we give cities more money, or whoever more money, or where can we find money, or whatever? It's all about like money to do, and those things were triage. Like, how do we house people? How do we get people that are homeless care, or whatever it is they need, right? But I didn't really hear a lot of talk about how we prevent homelessness. There was never a discussion about like, instead of figuring out how do we come up with money to pluck people from the river, why don't we go up the river and figure out why they're falling in the first place? And what I see, that we have no control at our level, and I don't care how much money you give Galt, or how much money we already get, that we're not going to be able to change, is things that affect, that cause homelessness. And I'm not saying in every case, because homelessness is diverse, whatever, but I see things like drug addiction and behavioral health, right? Those are two big factors to homelessness. Well, we don't control those policies at the iron end. If our police department, for example, have an interaction with someone who has a behavioral health issue or whatever, and he's, because really, our police department is the first point of contact with our homeless people, to be honest. We have a counselor that works with us, but regarded, more or less, right? So, but the problem is, once they get into the system, you know, they're not identified as having behavioral health, they're not giving the treatment or giving the... as having behavioral health, they're not giving the treatment or getting the help that they need on that level. They're not, they're not given any help for any drug addiction or, or substance abuses that are probably contributing to their homelessness. So again, that's where the failures, in my opinion, happen, and they're just put back on the street and they continue to be homeless. I mean, I can tell you, I'm not going to be an advocate for creating housing and GALT for homelessness. I'm just not, because I don't feel like that's the answer. I feel like I would be more inclined to see programs that could get these people out of homelessness, get them off of addictions, or get them behavioral health, you know, mental health that they need, and then get them back into, you know, being a regular person in society. But I just feel like, I see this, and I feel like this is a great idea and all that, but I'd be, I'm cautiously pessimistic, to be honest with you, because I just feel like it's just, I mean, I don't know. Like, why do others, why do some other states don't have as bad a homeless problem as California? I think it's because of our policies. And so if those, if that's not changed at the higher level, then, you know, unless, unless the Council of GALT, and Elgrove, and the Board of Supervisors, and all these entities that make up that, whatever, get together and we could force policy change, maybe, that would be maybe something, but I don't know. This is just my thoughts. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but.
No, no, it's actually really appreciated, and I would say that your comments are not unique. We hear that regularly. One thing I would lift up, especially around behavioral health, is that you are correct, is that those services need to be integrated. And one of the things, those services, behavioral health, mental health, addiction treatment, are county-run programs. And first of all, regardless of whether this, we want to be supportive, so afterwards we can certainly talk to your police chief about ways that we can make sure you do have access. But those are the exact types of things, braiding those services, which are important to the homeless system of care, but not directed by the homeless system of care, it is one of the reasons we see forming this as beneficial. As an example, simultaneous to this, my sister department in the counties is going through a transformation of the behavioral health system because of Prop 1, and that, that's a lot of change. And so this is a, a board where we would seek input of how, you know, what does this transformation look like, and what does it mean as it relates to the homeless folks that, that you're seeing in your community? So what you've brought up is exactly sort of one of the goals, is that we would help, this board would help break down those silos, because homelessness doesn't just exist because of one cause, it exists because of lots of causes. And so this would be a place where we would, would seek to braid those things together. Maybe not have all the solutions to fix state and federal policy, but, but as much as we can make it so that you, as a local elected, aren't feeling like there's, well, here's this silo in the county for homelessness, and here's one for child welfare, and then here's one for behavioral health.
Well, before, I'll ask my fellow council members to comment, but I would say, just lastly, I would support the, the option B, though, because I feel like the, the most important part of that would be to have the, the community leaders, the four community leaders, because I envisioned having somebody who's, you know, representative of, of the business community, who obviously have lots of interaction and problems with some homeless system, at least in our town, law enforcement, obviously, because they're our lead contacts. So without that piece there, without that third piece, I think option A, I don't even see that being, I think option B is by far the better choice that I would be supportive of, but.
Thank you.
Anyways, anybody want to speak?
Well, I just had a couple of questions about those options, right? I'm, I'm just like the mayor, I would support option B, and I think I already know the answer to my question, but I want you to give it to me anyway. Why does the City of Sacramento get two representatives and all the other cities only get one?
So that is definitely a recommendation that we could lift up. Frankly, the City of Sacramento, 70% of the unsheltered population is in the City of Sacramento, and so, and, and many more of the resources that directly benefit the, are managed and administered by them.
That's, that's, I, I knew that was going to be the answer. And, and the reason I ask that is because us being a small city, right? We have a history of larger entities wanting to make decisions, you know, based on their experiences, and the experience in Sacramento doesn't always reflect the experience in GALT. So with, you know, I understand they have a lot more homeless people than we do, but we, we run into this problem a lot, where the larger cities have more representation than the smaller cities, and we're kind of like, oh, you're GALT, you're over there, so just stay over there. But I'm very much in support of option B for the reasons that the mayor said.
Thank you.
I'll chime in. I also am in support of option B. I just have a couple of questions. This, I believe you said $40 million, is that county?
The COC direct funds is about $40 million. As, as a comparison, if it helps, my department, which is, does not receive any COC funds, is about $60 million.
Okay. So, and the Sacramento First Steps or whatever that is?
Steps Forward.
Step Forward, I'm sorry. They are, are they, they're watching over funding as well?
The, yeah, so the $40 million flows through the COC, yes.
And then, and that $40 million is coming from federal funds?
Yes, directly from HUD.
Okay. And who's watching over that? That's, I guess the COC is watching over Sacramento for, or Steps Forward?
That's a great question. So, so SSF is a 501(c)(3), so they also have a board of directors as a nonprofit. So as a nonprofit, they have a board of directors, then there's the COC board. I sit on that, as I said, the COC board is responsible for directions for COC activities, but sort of administration of SSF as an organization is their board of directors like any other nonprofit?
But that funding, you know, I'm just trying to follow the money.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Because I also agree with the mayor when it comes to, we should be preventing rather than, you know, coming at the back, the tail end, trying to solve a problem. So I'm just, I, I guess I'm curious where that for, the 40 million is going, and also now, the 60 million is also going. What projects have been tried, what's been successful, what has failed? You know, are we still just in planning phases with some of this? Because I think it's those kind of things that I'd want to see before making any, you know, movement anywhere other than I, option B.
Sure. And, and I can totally appreciate that, that, that makes a lot of sense. So just really high level, the COC funds, which are directly granted from the federal government, they're actually granted, for the most part, to individual providers, so nonprofit A, B, and C. The COC sort of administers that competition. They're pretty prescriptive. They're pretty much almost available, only available for permanent housing solutions. So things like rental assistance programs, but more in supportive services in permanent housing. And so most, and even though it's an annual competition, which is, it's a whole, for the most part, every year, you're basically renewing old grants. You're not adding to the pot. And it's very prescriptive, what you could, like, we couldn't just choose to divert that and do a shelter or do law enforcement, it's just not allowed. Your question about my budget, we certainly can maybe have an offline conversation, and we, we're doing a presentation to the board on the 21st of October around our budget. It is much more complex and diverse. I was just saying that sort of for context of like, in 2011, the COC budget was the vast majority of investment in our community and homelessness. Today, that has really shifted, where the City of Sacramento, for sure, and the County of Sacramento, and some of the smaller cities as well, have locally invested a substantial amount of money. I don't know if that's helpful.
And so none of that money trickles down to the individual cities for their help?
The COC funding?
Any of the funding?
So the COC funding goes directly to nonprofit providers. It is a competition. Now, some of, most of the grants are not place-based, so they're not like this apartment complex that, they're most for rental assistance out in the community. So it is possible that people are living here in GALT with the rental assistance through a COC grant. In terms of the funds that come through my department, most of it is invested in shelter programs, and none of those are in GALT. But we'd be happy to talk about that.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you. Give us a good presentation. The only thing, same thing, first of all, I might be leaning towards option B, if we have. The other thing is, you know, you mentioned something, we're doing the partnership. Partnership is always very good, you know? But thing is, problem here is partnership, Sacramento have a different location. They have a different than, we are very isolated, you know, city. I'm, I'm, you know, this is not a long lengthy, but only thing, like, for example, we all agree, I mean, if there is the agreement, like in homeless shelter, and I'm, I'm telling you right now, I don't think so, my constituents and, you know, the citizen, we be leaning toward there is any homeless shelter in this town. The reason is, this is the location. This, the location is totally different than Elgrove and Sacramento.
Yeah. And I should say, one of the things that we've said to every city and remains case, we are not looking that this board would usurp local zoning authority or decision-making. And so I, I actually agree with, your, your population doesn't make sense right now to have a homeless shelter. Like, we put them where, where folks are. But that being said, if there was a local decision or a recommendation for an affordable housing project, or a shelter, any other site-based place, this board would not make an approval, it would come to, just as you have today, any land use decision.
Thank you.
So I had a conversation with Supervisor Hume before he became Supervisor Hume about the homeless piece, and I would, I just want to thank him for, you know, following through on the things that I was told back then, and, and, and all the supervisors that are getting involved in this. Yeah, homelessness is, it's a mess, and it's got to be fixed, and I would definitely, absolutely get involved, you know, in something like this. I would need to be a little more educated. Definitely would support the B, just for exactly what the mayor said. I think the, you know, the business people who have them in their commu, you know, right in their front footsteps, they need to be involved in these conversations, is all I have.
Thank you.
One last thought, too. I, I, what I think, too, is with, you mentioned these nonprofits, and I think that those, those organizations, or even, you know, we have a couple small little organizations in town that kind of do something where they place a few people that are trying to transition back into, you know, into the workforce, out of, coming out of homelessness or whatever, and so very small, little things like that. And so, so groups like that, or nonprofits, like what you mentioned, I, I do think they probably do very noble work in, in, in addressing, like, one piece of why they're homeless, like, the people that are just, literally just struggling to find a place to live, like, they can't afford, they're lost their rent, they got kicked out, you know, that kind of stuff. They're not homeless because of mental illness or drug addiction or those, that's the third part, right? So they probably do a good job with rental assistance and all that stuff, and I think that's important. And so I think that we probably, and this is, and based on what I would hear at that policy that I was part of for a while, I feel like on that piece, I feel like they were putting money in hopefully the right hands to, to facilitate that kind of stuff. But then there's that other two-thirds, and I do think it's like a third, third, third. I do think that's the segment, I feel like it's the other two-thirds, that I think that we see mostly in GALT. I, I would say, and I, again, I'm just guessing here based on information, but I would say that our homeless count is probably made up of more people that probably have some kind of underlying problem that's, than, than, that's not just economics. And so for us, I don't think rental assistance program, even if we were to be given money in our town and be able to put together something to get people, I don't think, because again, as you know, the struggle is that you create a program or create a whatever to try to do that, but sometimes these people don't want to participate because there's certain parameters, and there's rules and things they have to do, and a lot of people don't want to live by that. They just want to go and be like they're being now. And so like, I remember the whole thing about the care court thing that was floating around, there was like an idea of that. I thought that was a great concept. I don't know whatever became of that, but I feel like that was a forced kind of thing, where at least people who had ended up on the wrong side of the law, that were homeless, would at least be forced into something or whatever. So I know that's a little bit outside of what we're talking about, but I'm just giving you, again, a, kind of an idea of what we're doing. Another complicated thing about GALT is that we are on the southernmost tip of Sac County. So the, the, the really interesting thing about that is that one of our biggest homeless issues is that where a lot of our homeless are congregating is basically on the county line, under the Dry Creek Bridge. So, you know, you can go down there at Sac County and do whatever, and they're just going to move over to the San Juanquin side. And so we're having to deal with multi-counties with us, and I don't think anybody else is dealing with that except us. So that's a real interesting caveat with our problem.
Yeah.
So I don't know how this is going to address that if it's, if it's, if it's just county-based. If it's outside of the county and we're dealing with a larger thing, then I guess it would help. But if it's just basically from the county down to cities, then we're going to be still dealing with that problem. So.
Yeah. Yeah, no, at this point, we aren't contemplating multi-county, but that is a really interesting challenge, and, and, you know, I certainly don't have an answer for it, but this would be a body where maybe some of your peers, peers might. Outside of this, I think we'd be happy to talk to you about care courts, it has been implemented, and Siobhan would be the right person. Maybe we can set up a meeting.
Well, I think you've got a consensus here about which of the options that we, we'd like to see, so.
Yeah. So next steps for us, this is extremely helpful, we took notes, I'm sure my colleagues did as well, is that we're going to pull together the comments. Like I said, we have one more city to go to next week, and then we will be going back to the board with sort of sharing your thoughts and probably pulling back together with your staff on, on next steps, should we want to move towards actually formation of this. We also still have, are working with the COC board themselves, because they have to choose to participate as well. But so we will definitely be continuing to converse with your staff about sort of next steps, but really, really appreciate all the time and all the thought, and definitely want to offer myself and, and Siobhan and others, if, if you're experiencing these challenges today, this is going to take a while, we, we want to be a resource to you.
All right. Thank you. And I, and again, I would defer, I think our best point of contact of, of knowledge, it would be our police department, I think. They probably are more versed with our issue in GALT than, than any other department, or even us, I would say.
Great.
So thank you for your presentation. Thanks for the information.
Appreciate it.
Also, thank you Supervisor Hume for attending tonight. I was going to say something about you earlier, but thank you, sir. All right, moving on to public comment. Tina, can you read our statement for that?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Ken Lee.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ken Lee. I'd like to acknowledge the flea market staff, the Asian male and the black lady. They followed up on handling a medical emergency. They rendered first aid from a guy who, who helped me load a refrigerator into their cart. He cut his finger to the bone, and, but it took 15 to 20 minutes to get the second cart with the first aid kit from the office to get out there. Lucky he wasn't splurting blood. So it'd be nice if they had a first aid kit on the cart. The Do Not Enter sign, it seems to be working at the flea market. Best cars are coming in that way, but they're still doing it. But every flea market day, there's announcements to move vehicles from the emergency lane, especially when they're trying to get in. And so it'd be nice to have a secondary entrance with a fire department key to remove the poles, because they, they make announcements, they need to move the cart, emergency vehicle needs to get in. And they should either have a transfer cart, so their paramedics can load their stuff in their cart and get to that person in the flea market. An update on the out-of-town T-Mobile, the Wi-Fi does not work at our GALT addresses. They need to check it up before they sign you up at that location. So the corporate office took back my Wi-Fi, but they stuck me with the combo $10 phone. I'm now paying $70 for that phone because it's not tied in with the combo. And that's how they get you. Also, the Walmart traffic upgrades are great, the stop signs, and the stop sign directly in from Sven City's Road to the pickup is working. The gates seem to be working at night to keep the trucks out of there, and they painted crosswalks, make it safe for employees to go back and forth to bring their packages. I also like to speak firsthand, I don't know if I can speak on the presentation, and firsthand, you know, it's a tri-black atmosphere that causes these people to do what they do. The daily associations, peer pressures to doing drugs, there's too much red tape to get, get through these agencies, and the stigma that goes along with it. Some of us become homeless because of medical conditions and, or costs. I went to an advocacy, advocacy group, and they had out-of-the-box thinking. And so they handled all the paperwork, and they're filling out the forms, and they handled And so they handled all the paperwork, and they're filling out the forms, and they handled the landlord. They were intermediary for me. Prescribed medications, they can also set you off, and you get a funny way of thinking. So my doctor's office, they had had an advocacy group representing Blue Shield. And that's basically before covert, a week before, that's how I got into my apartment. He did all the work, but he did not know where the apartments were available for him. So, you know, how can he get places for people if you don't know what exists? He didn't even know Galt Place had apartments there. So basically, I've been written up nationally as the most successful homeless person on the Blue Shield program. But basically, it's just, you need to stay away from the other people. You can't get into tri-black, you know, thinking. And when you stay away from them, basically, you don't fall in, you don't fall deeper. And I also like to thank the people of Galt. They did a GoFundMe to get me my down payment to move into Galt Place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Becky Ronsby.
Good evening. I got one thing, well, I'm going to talk about two things, but for this one, I want to bring up our R1A zoning. So, it came up in a property that's listed over on Simmerhorn. It's 1.9 acres, R1A. So, all along Simmerhorn is country properties right there, what I consider country properties. They have barns, they're on, you know, they're on acreage. But recently, a buyer of mine wanted to buy that property and put a horse on the property. It's right on the corner of Simmerhorn and, what is it, Marengo. But she was told that you can't have a horse on that property. This, it's hard for you to see, but this is absolute country property. It's long, it's got barns on it, but you can't have a horse on it. So, that, there's quite a few of those properties on Simmerhorn Road. This whole Simmerhorn Road, this is not being developed. This is all country property. So they're a couple acres, maybe five, but you can't put an animal on it. So what are you going to do, just mow the lawn the whole time? I mean, I don't buy a country property to have lawn. Can't have anything with hooves. I could understand not having a pig, or even the roosters, but to not be able to have a horse, or, and maybe a kid wants to raise a steer for FFA or something, all of that's not allowed. So that's a little bit crazy to me, especially where this is. So you guys are annexing these properties into the city. It was done in 19, or 19, in 2020. I know that wasn't you guys, but I would like to see some sort of verbiage added to it, that takes care of those people that have either lived there a long time, or they're going to sell that property, and the buyer of that property would like to put a horse, or have their kid raise a steer for FFA. So, let me just read this really quick. No hooved animals allowed under section, under Title VI, Section 6.04.090. Hooved animals, including horses, are not permitted on R1A zone properties within the Galt city limits unless explicitly allowed by code. No annex property consideration, no annex property consideration. The code does not distinguish between longtime rural properties that have been annexed, and standard suburban lots, all treated the same. So if you can imagine that, regardless of size, whether it's a half an acre, an acre, or five or 10 acres. So what I'm proposing is put a minimum acreage exemption on it, maybe an acre and a half to two acres, and let somebody have a horse, or raise a steer, and have a conditional use permit. The annexation clause suggests adding language to acknowledge that the larger lots annexed from rural areas should have a pathway to retain their historical animal keeping, keeping use, and tailored to the rural character. So, I just feel like we're a community that has a lot of rural properties, and we can't treat those homes like they're in town. We do have acreage, you know, like, I just don't want to, what are you going to do with that property? You can't have a goat, a kid can't raise their 4-H animal, or their FFA animal. I think it's terrible, the wording that's in it. I think it needs to be looked at, especially if it's affecting the houses that somebody's trying to buy or sell. We already have enough issues with housing, in Galt being enough. And so, this property's been on the market a while. I don't know if that's the exact reason. It's not even my listing. So this guy currently has that you can have horses there. Well, he can't, he doesn't know, probably. But he's not from the area, so that's what they get for using out-of-town agent. But, just kidding. So that's that. So, that's really all I have to say. I didn't bring you guys all pictures or everything. That R1A zoning, if you see over here, this is, these are like in-town properties. You can see, there's a ton of them in there. But then you have these little communities of country properties on Simmerhorn, and then, like Cherokee, and then the next one, what's the next one, that are these country properties, and, but you zoned, not you, but they're zoned that same, that same way. It's, it needs to be looked at, and I'd like to have somebody look at that. Here's the R1 zoning. This is the development, God, I'm blind, across Simmerhorn, where that development's going in. And this is the country properties that are in that zoning. They're all country properties. They deserve to not just have to mow, you know, five acres, or whatever. So, that's, that's my take on that. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, could we, I would like you to come back to, maybe if you could research this a little bit for council and come back, because this issue was brought to me recently, and I do think, you know, we've annexed a lot of property out to like Cherokee, and even Oda Sergeant. There's a lot of property that we've annexed that's rural. I can tell you right now, there's horses and goats in the notch property on Cornell. There's, on properties right there, and that's in the city limits.
Cornell, we did give, there was special dispensation that was given. I just assumed that was for everybody, but that, it does say, and Cornell's a LAFCO paperwork and everything for Cornell. I just assumed it was everything, so.
Excuse me. Well, the way we worked it with annexations is that if there was a current agriculture activity, or animal keeping activity that was sanctioned by the county, we honored that. So they were basically legal non-conforming. The speaker does bring up a good point about the zoning. So the R1A is more of a suburban zone, where we do have a rural agriculture zone that we can explore, using it in certain areas that are a little bit more flexible for that type of activity. When we do engage in those type of actions, we're always going to look for compatibility with what's around them. And in the area she spoke about, maybe there's something there to do with the zoning. So rather than a suburban R1A, we could go with more rural agriculture.
Okay. I'd be curious if you could just bring back more information to council. I know we can't really discuss this now, it's not an agenda item, but I think it's definitely something that got on my radar, and it was very curious because of these rural properties that are becoming part of our city over the last few years. So, thank you, Chris. We have any more public comment?
No, not this.
Okay. All right, moving on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Pratt, we'll start with you.
All right. A couple meetings back, I reported out that I am now in alternate on the BCC Sacramento Valley Basin Wide Air Pollution Control Council. So I did attend that meeting October 3, 10:00 a.m. Fortunately, I was able to zoom into it as an alternate. So I didn't vote, I wasn't a voting member, but I am now trying to attend those meetings, just so I can get more educated on what goes on with that, in case I am called to vote. So, so I have agendas, I have minutes, I have information, if anybody's interested in learning more about the basin, Basin Wide Air Pollution Control Council. That's it for me.
All right. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting I attend to cover, Mr. President, Sacramento Metro Air District Board of Directors meeting. This was on September 25. There was some item was on a consent calendar. And there is one item, we approve sustainable mobility in the capital region. You know, authorize air pollution officer to amend, amend their budget $415,000, and it should not exceed from 1.3 million. And also, we extend the term 19 more months. It will be July 31, 2027. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Reed.
I attended the last Consonus Groundwater Authority meeting, where we talked about water. We discussed a lot of things where our upcoming projects, including the voluntary well registration, and how that's going to go out to the rural areas of the, all the water districts involved. We're working on them, or Director Griffin's working with them to give a presentation in the upcoming meetings about how Galt uses their water. And, because they have a lot of questions about where our water comes from, where our water goes, how it's not going back into the groundwater, and it's going out into the river, et cetera, et cetera. And then we also confirmed the, the board, because they were just re-elected, so we confirmed that, and that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Reed. Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, I attended two meetings. Since our last meeting, I'll do the less exciting one first. I had another SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on, just yesterday. And we did, but more budget. We do a lot of budget for SECOG in that committee. Just for a little bit of interest, the SECOG receives, or has $47.3 million in revenue. The interesting thing about it is that 44% of that is just passed through, so it goes back out to cities and transportation authorities and things like that. So, almost, almost half of their money goes back out to help us. And they, so we received a report from the, the federal lobbyists, and they, or I'm sorry, the state lobbyists, and the legislature has approved the cap and trade funding to continue into 2045. It was supposed to end this year. However, by doing that, they have renamed it, so you won't hear cap and trade any longer. It'll be cap and invest. So, if you hear that, that's what that is. But on last Friday, SECOG held a retreat, and it was very interesting. It was almost an all-day event. There were some really good discussions. We had quite a few speakers and panelists come to speak. So surprisingly enough, for our COG, there was a lot of discussion about agriculture, which this hit right after our, and I hate to even bring it up, but our no-left-turn lane fiasco. Because one of the things that the agricultural speakers were saying was that we keep kind of hamstringing our agriculture, our farmers, with not thinking through some of our decisions on how that affects them. So it kind of hit home a little bit at that time, and it actually, our left-hand turn lane became, or no-left-hand turn, became quite the discussion, actually, for the entire, or for that retreat. Mr. Hume also is part of SECOG, so we brought it up. And I, thankfully, was able to sit at my seat next to the Caltrans representative. And so we had a very hefty discussion about a lot of the things going on down here in Galt, that Caltrans has an influence on. And so, it was just very interesting. But probably one of the most unique things, and Jenny might be interested in this, they had been decided that SECOG needs to be much more proactive in representing our interests and, and our goals to the legislature. Whereas, instead of listening to what the decisions they have, and being reactive, that we actually maybe are going to be proactive. And one of the very hefty discussions, everybody was on board with, was Rena numbers. And if, for those in the audience that probably put it out of their minds, you know, Galt got hit with an extreme amount of requirements for housing this last round. And it seems a lot of the rural areas, so our COG brings in Placer County, Yolo County, Sutter County, you know, there's, there's a lot of us rural areas. And a lot of the smaller cities, like Galt, were saying, you know, we all got hit, because it seemed like the state, the, the formula that they used to give us these numbers, just was almost trying to get the small towns to get closer to the numbers of the bigger towns, so that, you know, we're not unique. And there was a lot of discussion of, and this was coming from some of the bigger cities. I was also sitting next to Rick Jennings from Sack City, and he said, you know, "Well, why, why are these rural, why are you being required that? We could use them in town. We can do it, instead of having you do it." So, the thought process was to maybe try to change that formula to look better, you know, as a region, rather than each individual municipality having to increase these numbers, you know, equally, or percentage equally, that if the cities within the region can bring in those numbers themselves, then that should help alleviate the smaller towns like us. So, that, everyone was very excited about that. So I think if there's going to be any true advocacy coming from SECOG, that that's what that will, that, that might be one of those big things. Of course, I think what, we're six years off. That's, that happens every six or eight years or something. So we're a few years off, but if we can get that momentum right now. One of the other speakers that came to talk to us was State Senator Christopher Calbaldon, Calbaldon. Very dynamic, was very interested. He, he had been the mayor for 20 years in West Sacramento. So he saw a very small rural area be what West Sacramento is right now. And he, and he hasn't forgotten his roots. And so, I was very impressed. And he was the one who said, "You guys need to be, we will listen to you guys, the SECOG, this big region. If you guys come forward, we're hearing from the LA region, we're hearing from the San Francisco region. We don't hear from you guys. You have a voice." So, it was, it was very enlightening and very educational. So I was very happy. Anyway, there's a lot that went on. So if you have any other questions, I'm here.
All right, thank you. It's very interesting. I'm glad you're on that, and the right person for that, I believe. Well, I don't have anything that big to discuss. I did have a youth commission meeting last night, which is, it's as exciting, just as exciting, maybe not as big as important as that, but it's very important in our community. And I want to thank one of our youth commissioners, Ms. Holden's in the audience, so thank you for showing up tonight. We got our, finally got our, our board. Everybody's designated. We had our meeting in the chambers here, and we have a full commission, 12 youth, which is the largest, you know, since we, since we broadened the membership. And we went over just a few things. We talked about some of the things that the kids have been involved in, kind of a debrief on those. They were involved in the Blue Angels of Hope Dinner, where we, some of the kids went and volunteered at that. They participated in National Night Out. They did a field trip to the Capitol, which was a team-building field trip. And they also volunteered and helped at the Galt Alumni Dinner. So, very active group of kids. And they're talking about participating in the Saturday Market, the Fourth Street Trunk Retreat, and some other things that are being discussed. So we're trying to really make a big splash in the community with these youngsters. So, again, always enjoy that. We are in need of two mentors. If anybody is listening or watching this meeting, we are short two adult mentors. So anybody who would like to be an adult mentor on the Galt Youth Commission, please reach out to the city clerk and find out how you can apply. We really, it's an important thing, and we need people. So, that's all I have. And we'll be moving on to our consent calendar. So, it is recommended that items 1 through 6 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent calendar? No? All right. I'm going to actually pull two items. Item J4 and item J5. So with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, and 6, which are the receive and file warrants for the period ending September 26, 2025. Item 2 is the minutes of the regular meeting from September 16. Item 3 is a treasuries report for a period ending 2025. And item 6 is the authorize the interim city manager to execute amendment to the reimbursement agreement with Elliot Holmes.
And can I make a quick comment?
Yes.
I just want to note that the minutes from September 16 have been changed to reflect Councilmember Rodriguez was in attendance.
Okay. All right. So noted. So do I have a motion to approve? So do I have a motion to approve those four items?
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Sandu.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reed. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. All right, items 1, 2, 3, and 6 are approved. So item J4, which is the approval of the final map agreement for the Summerfield Twin Cities, I, do I have to, if we pull an item, do I have to ask for public comment? I forget.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
Not on those items.
Okay. All right. Well, if any of the council, does any council have any questions regarding J4? Because I didn't pull it for discussion, I only pulled it so that we can vote on it separate.
Did you have public comment on other ones?
On J5.
Okay. All right. I'll ask again for that then. Yeah. So for J4, no comment from council? Okay. All right, well, can we, I just simply just pulled it so we can have a separate vote on that. I, I'm adamant about continuing my no vote on anything that has to do with Summerfield. I apologize for my stubbornness on that, but it's going to go through, but. Clear a roll call, please.
Well, you have to have a motion, don't you?
I'm sorry. A motion to, yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm very distracted tonight. Can I have a motion to approve item J4?
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councilwoman Rodriguez, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
No. Items approved 3 to 2. All right, item 5, which is the agreement with California Waste Recovery Systems LLC for the cleanup of the city-owned property. So I just wanted to, I guess, just clarify, so we designated a budget number for this a while back, just a rough number that we thought was going to cost us. And so Cal Waste has come forward with the willingness to do that cleanup at the cost of $139,733, with also contingency on that, is that correct?
Yes.
So my only questions were, how quickly would this start? Because the community's been asking, how quickly would it start, and what do we anticipate the timeframe to be on getting it completed?
I'm going to also look to Jack with Cal Waste, if I misspeak here.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight, Jack.
Work will start.
This has been quite the community hot-button topic, so we're looking forward to getting this thing over the goal line.
So I want to thank Jack, you know, he's put, him and his team have put in a ton of work getting us this proposal to get us to this point. And one of the many benefits is, again, is we're not going to be disposing of a lot of the wood waste, but we're going to be repurposing it, but reusing it so that we help meet some of our diversion goals.
Okay.
Jack Fiori, California Waste Recovery Systems. Your first question was, how soon?
How soon would you get started?
The, there are some buildings that have, that require asbestos and lead abatement. The permit for those has been applied for, there's a 14-day window on that, which slams shut next, a week from Thursday, so that tentatively, based on tonight's approval, would start next Friday, week from Friday, 17th or 18th, whatever that is. The pallet work, we're ready to start that, that would probably start earlier, once the notice procedure is provided. So we're ready to go to work on all facets.
Okay. How long do you anticipate it taking? I mean, I know that's, I know it's, I'm not going to hold you to it, I'm just curious. Like, a couple months, three months?
I think a couple of months, we talked about that a bit, and I think, do we have 60 days in there?
60 days.
Thinking we could get it done in 40.
Okay.
So I feel pretty strongly that a couple of months would, should be sufficient.
Okay. And I only ask these questions because a lot of people ask me, and I just want to have, I want to be armed with correct answers, so.
So the order of events is, the abatement has to happen first before the buildings can be demolished, but in the meantime, the pile of pallets can be started contiguous with the other.
Okay. And is there, this contract, should it be approved tonight? Is this for the, what will we basically be left with, more or less, when they're done? Just a vacant lot of just dirt?
So, pretty much a vacant lot, but yes, there will be the warehouse, the metal warehouse building will remain.
Okay.
We will be keeping all the wells in the septic system for future users. Otherwise, it'll be a fairly clean site.
And the fencing, isn't there a?
The next phase after this work is done is we're going to be replacing the fencing along the entire site.
Okay.
So part of that budget request, we have this cost here tonight, and then in addition to that, we will have the cost to replace the fence.
Okay, so that original budget number included the cleanup and the fencing stuff. I remember, okay, I recall that now, yeah. Does any other council have questions on this item, since they pulled it?
I'm just curious, do you guys do the abatement yourself? Are you going to have to contract? That's what I thought, okay.
The, we don't, short answer is, we do not do. We've engaged in abatement, especially for.
What are you going to do with all those pallets?
We're going to grind them up, and they're going to go to Stockton, to the Port of Stockton, to DTE Energy, and they're going to be burned for fuel.
It's going to be a heck of a bonfire.
Yeah.
There's a lot of pallets out there.
Yeah, there's a lot of pallets.
It's huge. All right. Any other, any other comments from council? No? All right, well, thank you for answering our questions, Jack, I appreciate it. So, so yeah, John, I'm very happy to see that this number was way under, I know we still have the fencing piece, but I think we're going to come way under, I think, of what our expectation was, so that's good. So I'll support, I would support disagreement this evening, and if nobody has any other comments, oh, actually, we do have to take public comment, do we have any public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Harry Wenzel?
Harry Wenzel, 151 Partridge Drive, on the west side. I'm going to give you a little different perspective on this, okay? And that perspective is that we're sitting on a whole bunch of kilowatt-hours out there, okay? So the way that this, behind every contract, there's a deal. And I always try to say, well, what is the deal? Okay? And I think the deal lies in what, to know as a citizen whether we're getting our value or whether our, you know, everything is kosher. I think if you go back and you look at the very nice worksheet that was put in by Mr. Fiori, and it really is good, and you start asking questions about that, the big question is, who gets what in the split? I don't know. I tried to call Woodland Power, didn't get a response. I called Rio Bravo, never got a response. All I was trying to do is just get, what is the market for that wood? Okay? Because it's a, you know, power generation is a big deal. So we don't know that, and I think that as a citizen, I don't have any problem with it not going to bid, you could take it out to bid, okay? But I think when you have a vendor as good as Cal Waste, they'll get it done, but you have to remember that in business, they're good. Okay? And so, and I'll prove my point right now. You budget $160,000, and they say $139,000, and the contingency happens to coincidentally add to 160. I respect that, okay? That's doing business. But I think that on something like this, I think that what we really should do is ask Cal Waste, would you provide us with the deal you have with DTE, and what all your costs are going to be, and work on this, more as a negotiation. I mean, I have no problem with Cal Waste making pretty good money off of this. There's a lot to do here, there's like, I don't know, 90-something loads, and there's a lot of coordination and a lot of moving parts to it. But I think that from a transparency standpoint, I think that the right thing to do, if you're not going to bid it and go through all those machinations, and I would rather Cal Waste did it, because they are a really well-run company, you know, and they're in town here, a lot of people are employed by them. But I think that it's only fair that we start looking at cost and cost sharing and that kind of thing, so. And then just one sort of, it's just sort of a housekeeping thing in the contract that we have, I didn't see payment terms. Okay? And that's, I think maybe Mr. Splendorio would look at that. Payment terms are a big part of your contract, because if you run into a problem, now with Cal Waste, it's different, because we always owe them money. But with any vendor, though, I like payment terms, because that's really your only warranty. You just say, well, I don't care what the contract says, I'm giving you the money, and you're not going to get it. Okay? We need to get this straight. So those are, those are my comments, and it's a big job, it's a complicated job, and I think it's one of the better-written agenda packages that I've seen, but that's just my feeling about it. So thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Do you have any additional comment?
No.
Mr. Griffin, what was the original amount that we were estimating to the cleanup? That we, that we approved a budget for last time?
The estimate and the approved budget was for $250,000.
$250,000.
So the, between their contract and contingency, it's around a number of $160,000. And then I don't, I do not expect the fence to be $90,000, so we should be under budget.
Right. So I'm very, just to kind of comment towards Mr. Wenzel's comment, I am always leery of when you designate a number, and then the contractor comes in, like, just happens to be like that number and stuff, so I was actually happy that this number was far less. Is there any, I didn't see anything that concerned me, that, there was mention about the payment terms, do you have any comment on that, Mr. Splendorio, when the contract was written?
No, I don't. I, I think that the contract covers the city's basis pretty well, in terms of payment, when it's to the amounts, all that. You're going to approve the contract in a form approved by the city attorney anyway, so obviously if I have to, I'll take a look at it, and if there are things that I need to change, I have the authority to do so, but for purpose of tonight, you have enough to approve it.
Okay. So again, I want to remind for people that maybe, you know, this is, we had a pretty in-depth discussion about this prior, we collected rent on this for some number of years, and then the tenant basically defaulted on that agreement, we had to go to court over it and get a judgment, all this and stuff, and we weighed the cost of pursuing money that we thought we would probably never get, because of, it just, it made more sense just to, you know, get it cleaned up and move on to a new tenant. So even with the cost of the cleanup, and especially now that it's going to be under budget, the city did make a significant amount of money on the rental of that property, which was something that was not first, wasn't something we were going to do in the beginning. So this is not a loss for the city, this is, we still made money on the property for that course of time. Obviously, we would have made more if we'd have collected that money or didn't have to do cleanup, but things happen when you're a landlord, and again, that's my thoughts on it. Does anybody have any further comments on this item, Council?
No, just thank you, Cal Waste, for saving us.
Mr. Fiori, you want to make a comment? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just in response, and maybe to provide some additional clarity, and as was just said a few minutes ago, that's a huge pile out there. And the first time we stood and looked at it, we thought, well, I don't know, three and a half, four days, and the next time we looked at it, it was seven or eight days. So we got, put a little more science to the art, and what we actually provided the city was, on the low side, and this is what's in my proposal, on the low side, we're guessing about $124,000. On the high side, we're guessing about $140,000. And the reason we did that was to provide some, to mitigate some risk, because I really, I don't know how many hours it's going to take to run the grinder, and how many loads are actually going to go to Stockton, and how many tons are going to be accepted at the energy plant. So for the items related to the pile of pallets, which is about 50% of the overall scope of work by dollars, we bid those on a per-unit basis. So we're charging grinding by the hour. If it takes 36 hours, we'll bill the city for 36 hours. If it takes 37 hours, we'll bill the city for 37 hours. If it takes 52 hours, we'll bill for 52 hours. Likewise, we quoted the haul to Stockton. It could be 36 loads, it could be 55 loads, it's probably going to be somewhere in between, but we're really not sure. So we bid that on a per-load basis. And lastly, the receipt of the material, the city will receive a credit of $8.65 for every bone-dried ton, which is an energy term for, you bring the wood in, they measure the, they extract, or subtract, better word, the percentage of the wood that's water, and they pay you for the bone-dried tons of wood. So in my quote, I said there might be 616 tons, bone-dried tons, but there also might be 891 bone-dried tons, and hopefully it's somewhere in between, but wherever that number is, that's, that's how the city will be charged and credited for this project.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
So too, I know we have another, we have another tenant lined up for that property, right? So time is of the essence to get that thing cleaned up, this has been dragging along, so time is money, and I want to get it done, and so we can move on to start collecting rent again. So I do support, I do appreciate Mr. Wenzel's comments, thank you for always watchdogging everything, and I value your opinion. I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion is moved by Councilman, actually, I need to read the resolution. So looking for a motion to adopt a resolution for, one, authorize the interim city manager to execute, sorry, execute a service agreement with California Waste Recovery Systems LLC in the amount of $139,733 for cleanup of city-owned property, and item two, authorizing contingency amount of $20,267 for unanticipated costs, and number three, authorize the public works director to execute amendments within the approved contingency. And do I?
I move to approve.
Moved by Councilman Rodriguez, Councilwoman Rodriguez, I'm sorry.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Reed. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Items approved 5 to 0. All right, moving on to item K, matters of public hearing. Do I have any this evening?
None.
All right, regular calendar, item L. L1 is going to be to introduce an ordinance repealing and re-adopting Chapter 15.04 of the GALT municipal code relating to building and construction and adopting the 2025 additions of the California Building Standard Codes. Ms. Carloni?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Ross Lovato, I am your building official here for the city of GALT Building Department. We are here today as part of an ongoing commitment to safety, sustainability, consistency across the state. We're preparing to adopt the 2025 building codes and standards, which takes effect January 1, 2026. I know what you're thinking, we just got comfortable with the 2022 code, here comes the 2025 code, just to take us off our step. No, that's not it at all. These updates are very important in regards for our sustainability in the residential sector, where we continue to see growth with innovation, and it's across our community. The 2025 code builds upon the 2022 building codes, with increased emphasis on energy efficiency, electrification, and climate resilience. For new homes, we'll see updates that support the state's long-term goals for carbon reduction, renewable energy integration, such as expanded heat pumps, solar readiness, and battery storage systems. For our local builders and homeowners, the goal is to make construction more complicated, is to make the homes smarter, safer, and more sustainable. In the long term, our building department will be providing outreach and guidance to help with the smooth transition once this adoption is complete. I do have a small presentation here, I'd like to show you some of the highlights of what's going on here. Let me see here. All right, here we go. Our recommendation is, of course, to waive the first reading of Chapter 1504 of the GALT municipal code relating to the buildings and construction of the 2025 building codes adoption with local amendments. We go on to say, with the reason for this adoption is, every three years, the state of California adopts a new code, which will be implemented on January 1, 2026, as adopted by the state. This is enforceable standards for the life, health, and safety of our public dwelling spaces and residential dwellings, ensures efficient buildings and structures for public use and private homes, and this covers commercial and residential buildings, electrical plumbing, mechanical systems, existing and historical buildings, as well as swimming pools, the fire code, and the energy code. Some of these highlights we have in here, I added a little packet to your guys' presentation packet here, but here's some of the highlights. We do have some new regulations in regards for fire and smoke protection for two-family dwellings, which would be your townhomes or duplexes, which is very popular right now, is a spray-applied foam plastic, which we're going to do some more regulatory details on regarding our safety inside the building envelope itself. We have defined sleeping areas in regards for lofts, in regards for the size. building envelope itself. We have defined sleeping areas in regards for lofts, in regards for the size, the area, ceiling minimum, ceiling minimums, excuse me, and the ERO, which is your escape and emergency rescue openings, as well as smoke alarm requirements. In regards for deck construction, there's more regulatory terms being used for our deck beams, guardrail attachment, and just overall construction. Adoption is very specific to the Galt's geographic, topographical, climate, and environment. And of course, we have all the amendments that are relative to our city in itself. I did want to add a little extra something in here. It's not part of the building code, but which was a assembly bill that was passed June 30th, 2025. This is a, AB 130 streamlines housing approval by the settling, clear, objective standards and limiting repetitive hearings for projects that have already met local zoning and building code requirements. For residential plan review, that means less back and forth, fewer procedural delays, and faster turnarounds for times for the builders and homeowners. By aligning with state housing goals and local review efficiency, this bill allows the cities like ourselves to focus our staff resources where they're most needed, ensuring code compliance, safety, and quality construction, instead of reprocessing plans that are already met by adopted standards. Ultimately, AB 130 supports our shared goals, making housing more attainable and responsive to the community needs while still maintaining and integrative, and integrating our building codes and review practices. This has been going on. It will trigger on June 1st. And to give the simple answer on it, if we have a track housing development that's been approved under the 2022 code, when this 2025 code comes into implementation in January 1st, they still get to allow to build in the 2022 code. They don't have to go back to the review cycle. But that's only for our, our approved plans without any major modifications being made. If anything has been adjusted that's major, we will be doing a review process on those homes. The role of Community Committee Building Division, we would like to provide, the building department will enforce and adopt codes to provide the citizens in the Galt with a safe place to live, work, and visit. We adopt the codes that will maintain a consistency with our neighboring cities by enforcing all applicable codes on all construction projects. Adoption of this code also then provides consistency with our neighboring communities. And of course, the cost of the codebooks, staff training, implementation are all covered on the 2022 CDD budget. There'll be nothing out of pocket for our city to pay. And that is all I have. Can I ask, do you have any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. So, I do have two questions. So, one, on the last part of regarding the AB 130, so you, just to understand that, so if a project comes along and they go through plan review, or architecture review, whatever you call it, through planning, and that stuff gets approved, and then they just don't build those houses for, say,
Ten years.
10 years, they can still honor it. So, that, but it still has to go through plan review. This, this isn't circumvent any process that they have to go through with.
Correct. They're going to go through all the hurdles, but what we're not, what we're trying to do is not slow the process down once they've been approved. Now, if something does, substantial has changed, we will go through that entire review process again. But they have up to 10 years to do that. And it really, it's really only affecting our track home developments here, which we have several going on at the moment. Typically, your single-family homes, homeowners that are building their own home, they typically build within two to three years. So, this wouldn't really affect them as well. But for our Elliott builders, these larger people, it, it's, it's pretty cumbersome to go through all the process and then come January 1st, tell them, get back in line and go through the process again. It could really bring something to a halt out here. And what we're trying to provide is housing, is what we're trying to do.
And then my second question is, is there anything up there that, as a, as a building inspector, is there anything up there that you feel is going to be a big deal to builders that they're, because I know a lot of times, I mean, I was a contractor, but I was a little voltage, so I wasn't really, you know, construction, so to speak. There are a lot of times you're like, well, this is a new requirement that just came out, but us as subs are like, well, we're already doing that anyways. It wasn't like a big deal. There's already like a certain amount of expectations. Is there anything on that list that is, is substantial enough that's going to be a big deal that is being implemented that you're going to see really kind of make, ruffle some feathers more or less for, for contractors?
Not necessarily. Here, let me go backwards here. Here we go. Sorry about that. When we have the, where are we at here? I don't think I have it on here. I'm sorry. It's really up to our, energy code standards have really been pushing forward on it. So, we're getting more efficient homes here. And what we're looking for is energy storage systems. But what we want to do is we want to make it easy for the homeowner to update their home and not have to move out of it. So, we're having pre-wired for your battery storage systems, your car charge systems, your solar panels on the roof. This is all being pre-wired. Some homeowner, some agencies, or, excuse me, some builders are already doing this, but this is being mandated by the state now. It just makes it easier for a homeowner to stay in their home, update their home to reflect what the new current standards are.
Is some of that stuff like Title 24 stuff, or is that something different than I'm thinking of?
Well, the Title 24 is a loose term people use. That's actually the building codes and standards models called Title 24.
Okay.
But your energy efficiency is.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of.
Yeah, yeah, no. This is driven more by the Cal Green Codes.
Okay.
And what they're trying to do is make, like I said, the house more efficient. We're trying to get away from the natural gases. We're using more electrification going on here. So, you'll see more heat pumps being installed, which is being mandated. Like I said, the pre-wiring for all this solar energy storage systems, things of that nature. We're really trying to get out of.
Does any of this have to do with, I've heard a rumor that they're basically not allowing people to use gas? Like if you, they don't even, they won't even plum a ga, house for gas, like a gas dryer, for example, or any of that?
That is correct.
So, they're not allowed to do that anymore?
No, we're going, complete electrification, yes.
Huh.
Yeah, they're really going, they're really start pushing for the solar, the ESS systems where you have battery backups. When the power goes out, you should be able to sustain the evening and hopefully in the morning have your power backup and going. But yes, the, the state is pushing in electrification. There's no way around that. Whether I agree with it or not, it's not up to me. I enforce what has been mandated by the state. That's one of the issues I do have with AB 130 is you do have set a project that's been approved in the 2022 standards. Well, then, if people across the street that are building on the 2025 standards have to follow a different set of rules. But once again, it's an assembly bill that's been passed. We have to enforce these codes as they are.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay. Counsel, anybody have any comments?
I have a couple of questions. I thought that solar was required now. Is it just a certain percentage of developments?
It's a percentage. And then what they do is they call it the solar shares program. So, they have ways of avoiding actually putting solar on there, but you have to provide other efficiencies in order to abstain from that one as well. So, they're, like I said, they're looking for that efficiency in the home or within the community in itself. So, there might be neighboring communities that share a, what they call a solar share program. So, you might necessarily have solar on your house, but within the environment, you will, yes.
And then do we have any idea how many of these track homes are going to fall under that 2022?
Well, we have, what, I think it's four going right now. We have the Summerfield, it's just starting over here off of Twin Cities. We have your Liberty Ranch, which is.
Is it the entire, that's my question. Liberty Ranch, the entire, not just the individual villages?
Anybody that's been approved before December 31st will get to stay under the 2022 code and not have to be in any of these new implementations.
Even if that takes 10 years to build out, they will still be under the 2022?
Well, I'll just slightly amend that. There's a sunset in AB 130 for six years.
Okay.
So, this law is till, for the, for the building code sections till June 1, 2031, I believe.
Okay. Because that's what I was sitting here going, in 10 years, it could be completely.
So, the Summerfield project is going to fall under the new codes, though? Because they, or it made it under the.
They have been approved. They are.
Oh, because it ends December 31st of this year?
Correct.
And goes, I got you. Okay.
And they've just been approved. So, that, that their permits are just being issued as we speak.
Gotcha. Any other comments from counsel on this? No?
Just for a clarification, you know, this building code usually change every three year, right?
Correct.
And before the 2022, now it's 2025, right?
Correct.
And there is a lot of change. What is significant, as, as Mayor said, what other significant change? Just the significant change from 2022 to 2025?
One of the more significant ones, what they withdrew from the building code is wildlife interface. So, what happens is a city like Galt, where we're built next to some rural areas, we have to have hardened building going on there. So, we have fire-resistant construction now going on, on some of our outlining areas. And of course, if there's a wildfire, that'll protect our homeowners inside that home. Once again, of course, this isn't to protect the home itself. It's to protect the occupants in the home, get them out in a timely manner, and then we can rebuild that home as such. But they withdrew that small section out of chapter seven of the California Building Code and created a new wildlife interface book itself. And that's chapter 13 of our Title 24. No. So, that's one of the bigger ones right there. They've created a whole new division just for this before cities similar to ours that are, like I said, up against rural areas. We have lots of big open spaces where a wildfire can threaten our city at any time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
So, I, I have a couple of comments, not really questions. I kind of talked to the city manager about this yesterday and he's like, you either accept it or you don't. But I'm not the guy that just accepts it without giving my two cents. There's a couple of concerns that I have, which basically I'm just going to voice them. That is, first, the all-electric thing. It drives me nuts, number one. It's more expensive for the people that are going to buy our homes because obviously electricity is more expensive than gas, number one. Number two, we have an electrical system in this state that can't handle the electricity that it has right now. And we keep pumping more and more and more requirements for electric cars and electric homes and all of this in a system that they haven't fixed yet. All right?
I agree. I agree.
So, it, it just makes it harder for our residents. And what, and what's that going to do? Drive up the cost even more on these homes for, these homes for people that want to move to Galt because it's a small town and now they're going to be paying super-duper amount of money for homes. But, and then the other thing, I actually Googled it because I didn't know what that foam stuff was. And it just, it causes me a little bit of concerns for our first responders that are going to these homes, right?
That's why we, we brought some more code up into that because we have the same concerns that you're voicing right now. We, this is a new product that's been used in the last 10 years, but it seems to be getting more and more traction. And we want to make sure we stay ahead of what's going to happen if, if this thing were to catch fire or, I mean, e, even just breathing the air inside of a home that we've sealed really good, that we have to add what we call an IAQ fan or an indoor air quality fan, because we've made the house so tight. These houses don't breathe anymore. And also, you have the spray foam insulation. It's kind of scary. I, I 100% agree with it.
And, and I Googled it and it says the greatest risks are faster fire development, toxic and dense smoke, hidden fire spread, and more extensive overhaul for our first responders that are already doing hard work as it is. So, it's going to make it harder for them. And it's, so, those are my concerns. Not that it's going to change the state making their decisions.
Unfortunately, no. These things are mandated down that we are forced to accept. That's why there is some verbiage in the new code reflecting what they can and can't have in these things to make it as less toxic as possible, if that's possible. But yeah, I, I do agree. I share your sentiments on some of these issues.
They're gonna, in three years, are going to have to come up with a different fire retardant. Instead of just.
Water.
Regular water sprinklers. Now, they're going to have to have something else because of this unintended, yeah, anyway.
Yes.
Well, Mr. Reed, you know, we live in a state that wants to make housing more affordable, but yet we keep mandating things that, that, that cost more to build the house, which makes it less affordable. So, just wanted to remind you of that.
Doesn't make any sense to me either.
Any other comments? All right. Well, I will be looking, hold on. Buried my agenda underneath all these maps. All right. Well, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve item L1.
I'll move to approve as stated in our agenda, October 7th.
Moved by Councilmember Pratton, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
No.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Passes four to one. All right, moving on to item two. First, thank you, Ross. From the Parks and Recreation Department, this is going to be discussion of the official city parade route. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tina, can you start my five-minute timer and tell me when I'm up? You don't get off editing. Thank you for hearing us today. So, a little background on this item. In September 20, September 20th, 2016, the city council approved what they called at the time, the official parade route for the, for the town. That meant any town, any parade that went, came into Galt would have to use this route. In 2024, the city began the construction of the C Street Corridor Project, and it shut down our parade route for three parades, two IDC parades and one lighting of the night. We came to you back in May of '25 and told you that we would be doing some public outreach and discuss to see if we had any other possibilities for routes that the residents preferred. We held these two workshops, one in conjunction with the chamber to focus on our, our businesses here in town. That included northeast and the west side of town. 10 business owners participated and they added three new routes to be considered tonight. We held the public workshop, had four participants, Councilman Reed and a mother who brought her two children to observe the meeting and do a report on the meeting. So, basically, we had no one show up for that one. There were, there were no recommendations for that. So, some of the no-starters on some of the routes that we asked were, if you see here, the green is the railroad tracks. And so, we told them we did not want anybody crossing a railroad track in case a train came through and, and cut the parade in half. We wanted them to avoid the highway. So, Twin Cities and 99 wanted them to avoid the on and off ramps so we didn't have to deal with Caltrans and getting encroachment permits. Other things that we were going to consider, the street close, closures for the residents in the area, parking for the viewers, and the cost to do the parade. So, all that's considered in here. I went to our Public Works Department and our Police Department to get their pros and cons of all the routes, the cost for the routes, and that's what we'll go over right now. So, the official parade in 2016 was this one here. Started on the market grounds, went up Civic, down C, forth to E, which turns into Caroline, and back onto the market grounds. It requires 10 officers, six public work staff. The pros are it's a, the historic route. The cons are the traffic issues, primarily coming out of the Save Mart parking lot, people moving in and out. And there's a lot of driveways here that people are just coming through, just going through the barricades, trying to get out. Everything you see in red here, when you see it on the next few maps, that means that's landlocked. Nobody's going in or out for two to four hours, depending on how long the parade is and when the barricades can be removed. The estimated cost is about $45,695. This does not include any of the parks staff. This is just for the road closures and the staffing for PD to do the parade. This contractor price that you see here, that's a contractor the Public Works works with. We don't have enough barricades or staffing to put it, put them all out. This is the cost, along with Public Works staff, to work with them. So, when the contractor prices, that's for the barricades to be used. This is not recommended by either Public Works or the Police Department. So, this looks familiar because it's the same route, but just backwards. You start on the market grounds, go up Caroline, which turns into E, up forth, down C, down Civic, and then back into the market. Same pros and cons, same costs, same amount of staffing, still not recommended. So, and please keep in mind, the numbers up here, I'll have a chart at the end so you can kind of go over each one of the costs. So, this still looks familiar, but the only thing that was added, instead of stopping on C and going up, we go all the way, way to B, up to Fifth, back down to C, then we'll come down here. That adds a little bit of cost here for the contractors because you'll need additional barricades, totaling $48,095. This is the temporary parade route that we used for the last three parades. You can see that the red here is very minimal. You start here on the market grounds, go down Caroline to E, you turn on Fifth, B, Fourth, and come back and double back, and then come back into the Galt market. You see, you only have three public work staff. That's a reduction in that. We've run this parade successfully. The cons that were noted by either Public Works or the Police Department is that the traffic jams at the parade doubles back on E Street, can be mitigated by limiting the number of parade participants, or we can just put spacers in between to break them up so they're not so close. This is the cheapest of all the routes. It comes in at $34,000, almost $35,000. This is the recommended one. The next one, number five, you start here at the one-way on Melody. You come up Lincoln to F, to Fourth, to C, down to Civic. But you see how this red area expands into landlocking all of these people within this area? The other problem is, is that F Street is now closed off. The other problem is is that F Street is now closed off, which only leaves A Street to get through. And now the detour will start down at cost versus here at F. So there's a big, uh, the easy parade route is the pros, extremely large detour to cost. You shut down the people in the neighborhoods, including Melody Lane. Again, traffic issues with the people moving in and out of the parade, and C Street is completely closed off to public as an exit route. This cost is $46,095. It's not recommended. The final route, number six, is on the northeast side. Please keep in mind, we have not approached the school district. This is just a proposal. We would still, if approved, we would have to contact them to get permission to start here on their property. We would go down Marengo, Walnut, Carillion, Lake Park, back down into here. You see this massive area of red? You would landlock those residents in there for two to four hours, depending on how long it would take. They couldn't get in or out. This is the increase in two officers. So now you have 12 officers, still six, six public work staff. Easy to navigate, heavily populated populated area for cons, isolates large residential areas like we spoke. Shuts down the main arterial roads, Carillion Boulevard and Walnut. Parking's going to be an issue for that. And it's the second highest cost at $47,567. It's not recommended. So again, Route 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, here are the costs. The one that is recommended through Public Works and PD is Route 4, that temporary route. But with that, I'd be happy to take any questions, and the recommendation is for you to review the six routes and provide direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. I know we have some public comments, so we'll get to those in a minute. Give everybody a chance to speak. I will say I'm disappointed that I didn't get more people to show up. You know, we try to make, this is another example of the city trying to take efforts to get public input, and then we don't get it. And then, you know, in the in the wake of whatever decision is made, we're going to hear all about how people didn't get a chance to voice their opinion or give their input, you know, same old, same old. So that said, I I was looking over these today and I actually did some Google map measuring. I was trying to figure out if the traditional route, which is basically one is the traditional route that we used to do, right? Route one. So Route 1 is the traditional route. Route 2 is the exact same route, but in reverse.
Correct.
Exactly. And then Route 3 is the exact same with the addition of the B Street, coming around that little addition, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I was trying to figure out, because I know you made a comment about the doubling back and limiting. I just want to say I I would not support ever limiting. I know we might get to a point where I might think different. But I definitely don't want to limit people, don't want to limit parade entries. I think that would be not very popular in the community. This is not in the staff report, but I would entertain, I personally, I would entertain an idea of maybe if somebody is from out of Galt, like a like a Lodi business or an Elk Grove business wanted to have a float in our parade, that we could maybe charge a small nominal fee. Because I know Lodi charges for all their parade entries. I would never want to charge Galt citizens or businesses for that. But it just some way that we could mitigate the impact of more floats, because I know we do get that in the Christmas parade. We get a lot of Lodi businesses that come down.
I'd have to double check.
It's there's some for sure. I know. Yeah. Anyways, but I wouldn't want to limit it. So the parade is growing, right? I know that, you know, someone who I get back to the market grounds. I'm in the first part of the parade usually. I get back to the market grounds and there's floats that haven't even pulled out yet. So I mean, we've we basically, even if it's the traditional route or the one we've been running for the last few years, we basically have enough floats to basically do the whole parade route. So, um, I would favor a longer route. So, um, you know, out of these. The concern I have is the landlocking. I do get that. That is that is a concern. I can I speak firsthand. My business is usually landlocked in 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 either of the routes. And, uh, you know, you have to park off and then try to figure out how you're going to get into that area. But I do say, I do think that on these, on the the item, options 1, 2, and 3, that even though you are landlocking, you still have A Street, you still have F Street. Lincoln is cut in half, but with A and F, and then you still have obviously Third Street across the tracks. And then you still have, you know, up past City Hall. So you do have a way to get around. You have to go around, but you can get around. So that that is a big concern. I do know that, you know, parking, you know, usually I don't think is a big problem. It's surprising that it's not a bigger problem. You think that people have to park in neighborhoods. But I've never had someone complain that parking, because we got all the railroad properties and all that kind of stuff. But anyways. So I think that's something that people don't consider when they're looking at parade routes is that we have to factor in how many people are we landlocking, right? And what's the impact to traffic flow? You know, when people go to, when 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 3,000 people or however many it is, at least that probably go to leave the market or the parade route, you know, to go their car, how are they going to get around, right? And I know it's, um, I had a question. It seemed like the difference between option 2 and 3 was $2,400. Almost exactly $2,400 between 2 and 3. But yet, if you look at what streets will be blocked, it only requires one barrier more than the other route. So $2,400 just for one barrier? Because all the only the only additional barrier you have would be at B and B and Fifth Street. Because the one where you would normally block off Fourth Street at B, you would move that back one, okay? And then you come over and down, and then you move that one. So basically, if you do, if you if you, I've kind of drawn it out, you're only adding one additional barrier. So I'm just curious if, I'd be curious just to know why the additional barrier is $2,400.
I'll defer that to our Public Works Director.
So that would be not only for additional water barrier, barricade barricades, but also all the traffic control devices. You would have the road closed to head signs, detour signs, barricades, all the other equipment that goes along with it. So you factor all that in, there's there's a nominal price increase, and that's the quote that we got from our contractor. So what we provided is we gave them copies of traffic control plans for all of these, for the six various routes. And they, that was their basis for coming up with their their estimates of cost for, uh, for the.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, I, you know, just, you know, and I'm not basing my judgment, I'm just going to let you know, I'm not going to be basing my decision, what I'm going to vote on tonight, on cost. I I think, you know, if if we were looking at cost, we wouldn't do a parade at all because it costs money. But this has tremendous community value, so I think we want to just get it right and that the cost is what the cost is. But, uh, I always wondered why we didn't use, and maybe it's just not efficient, but I always wondered why we didn't use more city vehicles to create barricades instead of the water barriers. It seemed like it would be a lot cheaper in overall, because all you have to do is park the vehicle, couple of vehicles, and then, I don't know, just a thought. But, um, again, I'm not trying to pinch pennies here or nothing, so I just wanted to mention that.
If I can add, by approving the route today, you're not committing any money to anything. Every year, the parade, both parades are put into the budget and they're approved through that process, not through this one. This is only to have an official parade route where we don't have to come back to council and ask for you to close the streets for these parades.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'm going to hold my additional comments and thoughts so that my council members can speak. And we also have some public comment too. So does anybody want to jump in and ask questions?
I just have one quick question for right now. Do we know how many residential properties are landlocked by this one?
I do not know.
Because it doesn't seem like there'd be a lot. I also am curious as to what the business owners said, but, you know, is there the 10 that showed up to this meeting, what were their?
They're, I would say the primary concern is that it went down there in front of their business.
They wanted it to go down in front of the business.
So that's why we're we're seeing the request to go back up C. So the ones that they asked for in that meeting is number 2, this one. Number 3, adding the additional B Street. And number 5, right there. Those were the three that were added that day.
Okay. You're in charge.
All right, then.
You're in charge now. My timer went off.
So anyway, on this route, I just want to make a comment. First of all, you know, the route number 1, how long we doing on the route number 1?
Uh, we started that in 2016.
2016, right?
And we held both parades there.
And 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 the other thing, my concern, I know some business have a concern because the C Street is very much a very prominent thing. And then I I I like to, I I know if you really look up, I have a business, some people have a business, four slides, very historical thing. And I think we're doing from a long, long time. And I I I like to keep on the C Street. And I I know the staff recommending number 4, but I would think when we just doing, when we was doing on Route number 1, uh, Police Department, they are not recommending chief. What was the big?
The, um, so we've done Route number 1, but there are challenges with Route number number 1 and the staffing that we have available. And since 2016, there have been an increase in what I would call Homeland Security event issues. Um, and I know they don't always translate to smaller communities, but we have a problem locking down that C Street corridor, coming out of those commercial areas once the parade clears the back end, and there's many chaos that occurs. I didn't expect to have Corporal Steele speak, but if you wanted a more on the ground assessment of that, I'm sure he'd be happy to give that to you. And so the reason why we like 4, and I understand 4 isn't from the perspective of a business owner and or, you know, what we'd like to see, it's more from a security standpoint. That locks down our vulnerable points easier for us as a police department, and we can control it better. But at the end of the day, the council makes the policy decisions. All I can make is the recommendations, and that's specifically why I recommended number 4. It does not, I'm under, I understand other concerns that are out there, but I have to take it from what my staff feels they can best do, efficiently do, and safely do. And that is my staff's recommendation, which makes it my recommendation. And I don't mean to be over direct, but that's where we landed.
So the concern is people are coming out onto C Street from the Save Mart parking lot after that last float, or hopefully at least after the last float. That's the concern.
Right, because people start breaking down, right, on the back end of those, and then cars and vehicles start moving. We do not have officers placed at those driveways. We have them at the major major intersections. So we have hard closures at Lincoln and C, and Lincoln and Caroline or E, or whatever that is. Those are the sort of the north, south hard closures. But if you've lived here long enough, you know the cuts and the places that you can go to move around, and that's where it becomes more of a challenge. Corporal Steele, did I miss anything in the analysis, or was that accurate what I said?
No.
Do you want to come up? You'd have to come up to speak if you needed to add something. I'm sorry. Mr. Solis, too.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Chief. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, I've been the traffic officer in Galt since 2019. I've had the opportunity to plan multiple events from a police perspective for these parades. Chief is absolutely accurate. As time progresses, as we move through the years, we have to plan for the possibility of a bad actor, somebody who's intent on causing harm for our citizens. And as police officers, it's our job to prevent that as best we can. Limiting inappropriate intrusion into our parade route, that's our biggest priority. And as Chief pointed out, um, when the parade clears, Save Mart is not the only issue, but it's an issue. Plenty of people will move our barricades because the parade's gone and they feel like it's time to go. We want to limit that as much as possible. So that's one of our concerns for and reasons for recommending the temporary route become the new permanent route.
Yeah, that that's that's your recommendation, but your expertise, if something is historical, you know, it's it's doing from last how many year, and I don't see any on the report, is big incident happened. That's why, you know, this is your recommendation, I totally understand as a safety point of view, but my, that's why I'm asking what, you know. And then I'm talking about, you know, when we changing, that's my opinion, when we changing from historical to the backside, and that's a big effect for the citizen. That's why my job to want to make sure my citizen is happy how how we doing.
And I just want to be clear that we're not arguing against community sentiment or trying to drive policy decisions. We're just giving our input. There was a time that parade went all over, especially the Christmas parade went all over town, both sides of the freeway. Um, and that, under any circumstance, couldn't continue now based on Caltrans constraints and so on. From a security standpoint, this is our best solution. It's less critical at Christmas than it is on 4th of July. Our challenge with 4th of July is we have events that start basically at 7:00 in the morning and run all day. And I have to staff patrol and handle that in addition to special events, and I run out of staffing. So I don't have enough officers, or I only have a limited number of officers in best circumstances to to deploy for the expanded, the expanded maps. But at the end of the day, whatever council decides, we will move forward with and do our best, do the best we can and revisit what we need to in that regard.
Thank you. And my other comment about the cost, I know there's a cost, a lot of things we thinking about the cost, but this is 4th of July. The parade, if there is a little bit about the cost, you know, I don't have personally that much concern because it's a yearly event and there's the people's event. Let's, uh, take a public comment on the other things.
Sure, we can make public comment. You all right with that, Matt? Or do you want to go?
Um, well, I can, I can state my
Okay.
my thoughts on it before public, so they, if they want to argue against me, that's fine. Because I do support 4. I know, I know that's not the most popular one, but for all the reasons that's been discussed. I know, you know, we're have, we have, uh, we have a hard time getting people to turn left, right? And now we're going to close this all off and and try to herd people in, and they will move the barriers and they will, you know, do what they're going to do. And, um, and, you know, and 4 is the one we did last year, and I thought it was very successful. People are getting in the habit of going down to Fourth Street. That's where the big crowds are, and it was, it was pretty cool to see that. Now, I am, you know, old Galt, and I love to see it on C Street. I won't die on the hill for for number 4. But, um, you know, if you guys are all supporting the other one, I'm fine with that too, but but I would go with 4.
All right. Well, why don't we take some public comment and then we'll can discuss a little more, so.
Chris Grossman?
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk on this. I'm sorry I did miss the opportunity to go to the Parks and Recs meeting. I just didn't see where it was. I'm concerned on Route 4. I think Route 4 is the easy pick because it's what we've been doing. But I saw the size of the parade being really limited with using Route 4. As Sean brought up earlier, he was back and there were still people going. He had people go in both directions on that one street. Our town continues to grow. One thing I think brings bright, great pride to our town is this parade. And I think we're going to continue to see the parade grow with it. I thought it was interesting, Chief brought up Route 7, which he didn't name Route 7, but I had named it Route 7 because I remember back in the day, we would take a parade and we'd wind through this whole town. I don't know how many miles it was long, but I could tell you I was on a tractor and driving the tractor and we had hay bales on on our thing. And we we would drive through and we visited the east side, the west side. We didn't care. We were throwing candy everywhere to every, all the kids. To me, that brings back fond memories because it doesn't divide the town. It's not an east-west thing. Same time, I have a lot of fond memories of C Street being the parade route. We built this beautiful road, and yet we're gonna take one of the biggest events in the city and avoid utilizing it. I'm not necessarily a fan of that, to me. If I couldn't get us winding all over town, which maybe there's legal requirements, maybe they're not, we didn't even have guards back then, Chief. So amazingly enough, we could drive through town with a tractor. And we'd have people cut out in front of us, waving, huh, boom, continue on down, but the parade continued. I loved that feeling. I loved the C Street feeling, so C Street would be my vote number two. The other thing that I look at is the, uh, use of contractors. You know, we're spending a lot of money on contractors on all these parades, and we're gonna continue spending it. Now, tonight I heard the obstacle is barriers, and people maybe. I'd rather see that money going to, one, buy barriers if we need additional barriers, and put them up with city employees, and that money that we're currently going to contractors, go to city employees, and over time, I don't care what it is, but I'd rather see if you city employees get that money than going out to a contractor. The water barricades, I don't know. Maybe we are a terrorist destination, but, uh, I, I don't see Galt becoming one. Maybe that's code for the city or the, you know, the great, uh, state that we live in. Now, we have to have water barricades because they're gonna take my gas from my house, so why not make me have water barriers for a parade? I, I just really see protection. I, I feel pretty protected. I, I'm not scary of some back, bad actor coming into the city of Galt. If we want to be really secure, guys, let's stay home and keep our houses locked, keep our guns locked, and, uh, wish Merry Christmas to everybody on the internet. You know, you can't run scared in this world. I'm not a scared person. You come at me, I'm coming at you. I don't think the American way is to play hide and seek. American way is we go out and we do it. We're a small city, let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosman.
Becky Rowensby?
Hello again. So I just want you guys to remember, what's the parade for? What do we have parades for? Why did we do it? Why'd we start it? That, that's, that's what I'd like to remember. So why do we do it? And parades are not for convenience, obviously, or we wouldn't do them because they're a pain in the rear, right? So it locks down the city. You're gonna have people complaining. You're gonna have some people that are happy, some that are complaining. It's not about convenience. To me, what this parade represents, for me, is that we're bringing the community out, keeping them in town, spending money in our town instead of going to Elk Grove or Lodi because that's where they go if there's something not going on here. Let's make it even more magical and bring in the tax dollars to our city. Um, involve the whole street with the experience, and, um, not the, not the residential street. That's not really a great experience for me. Yes, I'm one of the businesses that want it to come down C Street, but it's an experience. You know, if you make that whole downtown corridor that, you know, C Street and Fourth Street, it's so nostalgic to me. And that's what this parade feels like to me, is the reason that we do it is for that, is to bring the community out so they don't leave our city and go spend their tax dollars somewhere else like they do a lot, right? We don't want these big things in town, but in order to keep them here, we have to have a big event. So Route Number Two, to me, is the easiest way, right? But Route Number Three is my favorite, and the reason it is, is because it goes all the way down Fourth Street. Only thing I don't like about that, and obviously people way smarter than me thought about this, but I don't like it going in front of the fire department because if there's an emergency, you know, that it's gonna have to mow some people down or what. Obviously, they're not going to, but that's a little scary to me, but it's a great route. Um, I don't like Route Four, that the, limiting the number of parade participants, I can never get behind that. Excluding anybody from participating, how would you pick? So then the town's gonna have that issue again. How would you pick who gets to stay? I feel like there's security issues in every single route, and people are always gonna move the barricades because they just are going to. I don't know how you're gonna keep them from doing that. I don't care which route you pick, so I think that's, um, I don't know. I, I think that's gonna happen no matter what, so I, I, I call that one out on that. What else? I think that's, it, no, obviously Route One no longer works. Five and Six to me are off the table just because, I don't know, it just seems like a lot. You're gonna have traffic issues regardless. Just want to make sure I don't forget anything. And you said that the one route that we have now ran successfully for two years. Well, the one before that ran successfully for nine, right? So there's that argument, and I, I just think it's, it's doable. Bring it down C Street, let it be an experience for our town, bring the kids out, bring the family out. I, I hate what you guys had to bring up because I guess you do have to think about that, that's your job. I, I would hope that that is never a problem, but I just feel like we have to do it for the town so they don't leave and go somewhere else. So let's make it super cool so they don't leave, instead of just, okay, let's get this, this thing over with, let's do this route, get it over with, and then we can get all the cars cleared out. What, what if we get them to stay? What if we have them stay a minute and figure out a way they can spend their tax dollars at the Maverick Station? Just kidding.
May, may I add a comment, please?
Yeah.
Regarding the CSD Fire Department, uh, they will either be in the parade, or we provide a fire lane so they can exit the firehouse should they be in there.
Okay. Next comment?
Nicole Gross? Thank you. Ken, Ken? Is it for this slide?
Good evening, Mayor, council members and Parks and Rec. My name is Nicole Gross, and I am a proud business owner of the Chandler Gross Group, anchored right here on the corner of Maple and C Street in Galt. I was born and raised in this area and was able to open up my office this last year. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of several C Street business owners and community members, including myself, again Chandler Gross Group, Levine Insurance, Next Generation Barber Shop, Ink House Social, Reyes Tacos, as well as Papa's and Winks. Contrary to what some may have mixed feelings about the C Street revitalization, we personally love the changes as business owners. We've seen firsthand how much life, energy, and pride this area has brought back to our community. The Concerts on C Street event showed exactly what that corridor represents. Connection, growth, celebration is what makes Galt so special. That's why we encourage and support Parade Route Three, which would extend the parade to include C Street. This corridor has become one of Galt's main gateways, leading directly into downtown and Old Town. Extending this route would highlight the investment and revitalization along C Street, encourage, um, patronizing local businesses that night, as well as provide better parking and accessibility for families. This would improve traffic flow after the parade and our, to our belief, allowing vehicles to move easily onto A Street to connect to Highway 99, or disperse southbound towards Lower Sacramento Road for those that are coming in from out of area. We do have many people that come from out of the area to this event, which is awesome in our opinion. Having both walked in the parade and watched from the existing C Street, the E Street route, um, I've actually sat on E Street at a residential home there, as well as, um, participated in the parade with my son several years, or a couple of years ago, as he walked some livestock animals through there. What I can tell you, we noticed about the E Street route is it was a lot quieter towards the tail, you know, on that E Street portion, as well as, um, it was less engaging, but it was also poorly lit, in our opinion. The C Street, on the other hand, is active, inviting, and just definitely, as we feel, reflects the heartbeat of going into the downtown and, um, Old Town area. We all obviously love Galt, that's why we're here today, um, and we're proud to do business here. In fact, as Sean is aware, um, I had a client attend, um, the parade last year and just loved it so much as she walked through the coffee shop among the other businesses, um, downtown, and they decided to purchase a home here. That's the kind of impression that these events can make, um, in our community. So again, we thank you for your time, considering Route Three. I know it's a small adjustment that would make a huge impact for our businesses, um, our families and our communities, our community as a whole. But before I close, how many of you actually were at the parade last year? Or have been historically? Okay. So then you guys know exactly what we're talking about, and we talk about the magic that comes into this town because it literally feels like a movie, um, on Fourth Street, and we just hope to bring that up C Street. So again, thank you for your time, and, uh, these are some other business owners that I mentioned, so as many of you already know them.
Yes, thank you, um, the City Council, Farmer, uh, Mayor Farmer. I was one of the ten. My name is Mark Jackson, owner of Next Generation Barber Shop, and I was one of the ten at that, uh, meeting that day, so, and I thank the city for, for working with us, um, on this. I do remember there was a time, um, when we had paper bags that lined the streets that were lit with candles, you know? And that was a very magical, um, event as a kid. And, um, now owning a business on C Street where a lot of our business owners do, these business owners here are the biggest, some of the biggest contributors, um, to, to this talent, to, to the kids' sporting events, to all this stuff, you know? So getting our community out onto C Street, you know, and, and utilizing what we have for them there, um, I think is a big deal. So thank you for your consideration on this matter, and.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just, uh, just a note of etiquette, next time, uh, you guys can all speak, um, make sure you fill out individual cards, and I can give you guys all your own separate time instead of trying to share the same time. So, did you want to say something? Did you fill out a card?
Uh, just, I did.
Just grab a card real quick, please, just so we can follow protocol, and then I'll let you say a few words. Just put your, just grab one right there on your left, right there, just throw your name on it and walk it up here. Just don't want to get in the habit of breaking the rules or I'll get in trouble. They won't let me run the meeting anymore. All right. Just bringing it up and handing it to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Reyes, and I'm the owner of Reyes Street Tacos. I mean, they already highlighted everything they wanted to say. I'm not much of a speaker, so. I do just want to say one thing. Uh, the Christmas Light Parade isn't just a route. It's a reflection of our town's spirit. So let's make this a highlight, uh, this year for 2025. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Ken Lee?
Hello, I'm Ken Lee. I'm speaking as a NERT trained by the Fire Department for 33 years. It's called CERT in this area. They do traffic control, they observe dangers, and they, they're trained in first aid, triage organization, they organize the traffic, they can control traffic flow, and they can guard the barriers. It's free. And basically, you've got many, many that are trained in the organized group, and they're also trained in finding lost kids. So they're, they're a good group if you call on them, and they don't cost you anything.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
No more comments?
No more comment? All right, well, I want to thank everybody for speaking. I did speak to a lot of people outside of this meeting, you know, trying to get input of my own, and just kind of weighing in all the things I've heard tonight, and I do appreciate some of the comments that have been made. So I wanted to share a few thoughts here. The comment that was made about the inconvenience factor, that kind of resonated with me. I, I mean, you know, we sit here and we try to figure out what's gonna be the least impactful, this and that, and I mean, the reality is they're all gonna be impactful, there's gonna be inconvenience to somebody no matter what it is. But I think that the pros versus cons, if, if the inconvenience factor is the con, I think the pro is that, that our parade is super important. As Ms. Gross, uh, mentioned, you know, I've talked to people that come in my place of business, they talk about, they can't even believe that we have a Fourth of July parade. I mean, Lodi doesn't have that, Elk Grove doesn't have that, and they go, well, we have a Christmas parade. It's like, well, we have one of those, too. And they go, oh, you have a Christmas and a Fourth of July parade? It's like, yeah. So I always laugh when people say we don't do anything in the city of Galt. We do a lot of great things here, um, and our parades are by far the biggest things that we do. And, uh, I couldn't really even pick my favorite one because it's like picking, picking your favorite child. I mean, they're both different, but they're both highly attended, and they're both special in their own way. I do appreciate the police's input. Those concerns are concerning to me, um, because public safety obviously is important, and it's their job. I do think that if someone's gonna do something, though, no matter what, how many hoops we drum through to try to have the best, safest route, if somebody wants to do something bad, unfortunately, they're gonna do it, and I kind of agree with Mr. Brosman. It's like you can't live your life in fear, thinking that you're gonna, something bad's gonna happen. I know that the police department's gonna do the best they can to keep us safe within the policies that we set forth, and so I do appreciate that they do that, and they do a good job at it, too. So whatever we decide, they will take that and they'll, they'll do what they do. I think the, the, with the Save Mart concerns, I, I do think that, you know, there is an exit path out of the rear of Save Mart, and I, I think that maybe if we got creative with, um, blocking those entrances and make, forcing people to exit out of the Save Mart, should a route that involves C Street be approved, of course, um, that that would be something that could be considered, or maybe, um, uh, looking at this, I think the longest route is gonna be option three. Uh, it does add a quarter mile just by doing that little B Street jump around. It does add a quarter mile. I think that's important because we are getting a long parade, and any, any length that we can add that doesn't tremendously inconvenience people more, uh, is important. I don't like the melody, uh, the one that goes down melody, because I think the problem with that is, is that the F Street corridor to Lincoln going out south is, is a highly used, uh, spot. I see a lot of people using that to try to get away, get it, get out of the parade area. So if you were to, to do the melody onto Lincoln and then down F, uh, you're gonna totally take F Street out of the equation. I don't think that's a good idea. I think it's important that we leave F open to Lincoln, uh, so there is a workaround there. So it just, a little too much, uh, landlocking, I think, on that one, so I'm not a fan of option five. So I just keep, you know, I just keep going back to option three, like I just, you know, I get that option four works, and it's been fun. I've been in, by the way, I have to say, I don't think I've ever missed a parade in like 20 years, honestly. I've been in every parade when it used to go on the east side. My family used to be in the Christmas parades, we would be in the Fourth of July parade. I've been in every single parade, every single year since I've been on city council. I've walked it, I've ridden in it, I've ridden on tanks, I've driven my own cars, every forum, I've done all the routes, I've seen all, and I, I could say that I could envision all these different routes. But I do think there, I, I want Old Town to be a part of it because that's where Galt started, but I think C Street, there is a big piece of nostalgia with C Street because as a kid, watching those parades for the last, you know, my entire life, it was always up on C Street, and, and it's a big piece of Galt. It's the corridor, it's, you know, it's got the old, you know, it's got the water tower there, you got the old, you know, with the old golf frosty, you got the, you know, all the businesses up C Street, some of those buildings that were occupied by before those business owners that spoke tonight, there was, were other businesses there, and I, it is, it is a big piece of the town, and it is the main corridor, and it's beautiful now. So, you know, with all that said, um, and I do think that the concerts on C Street really showed the potential for having a lot of the businesses on that street be involved in doing some kind of fun activities in, in correlation with the, um, Fourth of July parade, and I would like to encompass, you know, those people. So I, I very much heavily am leaning towards option three. I think it's the, it's the, it's the perfect compromise between Old Town, um, and, and bringing C Street in. Obviously, it runs the route backwards, which I think is obviously the most functional and probably the only functional because of the types of turns that have to be made. Uh, I like the layout that's been presented. I think it works. It landlocks some areas, yes, but I think there's no way around that in some respects. You're just gonna have that no matter what. And honestly, I think it's the only route that the people of Galt are gonna be happy with. I, I think no matter, if you pick any other route, I mean, if you pick the four, the number four option, which would be easy to do, I, I think that there's gonna be a lot of unhappy people. I think that if you pick the number three, that the people of Galt, I think 90% of the people are gonna be happy with that route. I think they're all gonna be happy that we're inviting, we're bringing in different elements. elements. Obviously, it's a little more challenging for staff, a little more challenging for PD. But I just, I just think as someone who's been in all the parades, that's the one I think is the best. And I think that the people that elected me would want me to vote for. So that's what I'm supporting tonight, is option three. I'm happy to hear from everybody else, though.
So a couple of things. Number one, for everybody that didn't attend the meeting and decides to complain about it afterwards, we gave you a chance. So that's on you. Number two, I received two telephone calls on this one issue. One was registering their complaint about Route Number Four and the doubling back on the one street, how they didn't like it. And then the other one was how they recommended that they wanted to take Route Number Three because of that extra little loop up on Fourth Street. So that's, all the feedback that I got was everyone wanted Route Number Three. So that's probably what I'm leaning towards as well.
You know, Route Number Three, since the mayor mentioned that, it a little bit added, I think, the better for the community. Because if you see this time, the parade even start, we already finished. It's tell people, so it can be added. I know a little bit more money, but we all doing for the community. So I'm also going to lean towards number three.
So just full disclosure at the beginning of this, I too heard from some people, definitely they lean toward three, and I am leaning toward three as well. However, I'm going to play, throw something else in there. And I did discuss this with the city manager. You know, we do have these nice new medians on C Street. They're beautiful, but we know people. And you're going to have, you know, floats or vehicles driving down the one side, either the north or the south side, however you decide to do it. That means the people on the other side are probably going to cross over and stomp on all those plants in the median just to grab candy or to watch the parade better or whatever. So I think the city, or we need to be prepared for that fallout after each parade. Because we know that those are the bad actors I'm concerned about. But I do think that my concern with four, just, we are growing, and yet we want to make only really too small areas for people to gather to watch this. Because I agree, I, you know, I have not been in 20 parades, but I have covered them. And those night parades down F Street, or not F Street, but E Street, it's dark that, in the evenings. It's really dark. And if you're going to make more and more people gather in those little areas, they're going to be parking on both sides of that to watch that parade. Plus, you're going to have double vehicles for that parade going at night. I just, I just, I think that's a safety issue. So I am, unfortunately, I understand it worked temporarily. I think that was a good thing. It's what we needed to do. But I do think we need more coverage area. I like continuing that down Fourth Street. Again, I'm going to throw some, I don't know what we do for the Fourth of July because you have, don't we have vendors down Fourth Street? Or do we, so do they just stay on the promenade and we don't, they're not in the streets?
We have it for the Fourth of July, depending on when the Fourth of July is, we run it with the Saturday market. And we also do a holiday festival, too. So a nighttime Saturday market. And may I add that it's my understanding that we would not allow people to sit in the streets to watch the parade. So if it ran on the south side, people aren't lining up in the street on the north side to.
But they're probably going to sit in that bike lane of whichever side you put it on.
Right. It would be the sidewalk or the bike lane, but out of the street area.
Yeah, but there's a median between that bike lane and the lane, you know, where they're driving. I'm assuming people are going to sit in that park, in that bike lane. But that would make me feel better because if they are coming up, and the mayor actually talked about this, if they are coming up on the south side of C Street, then you actually have an open lane. If you're not going to let people sit over there, you have an open lane for them to exit and get out of town. Because they could turn, they would turn out of save mart and go up the free, you know, and get out of there if you're not going to allow people to sit there. So.
And please, so before you guys vote on this, we would have to limit the size of the parade participants, the vehicles, because not all of them will fit in that.
Right. And we already have, and I think I discussed this with someone, we already have a height limit, obviously, because we have.
Those are for the wires that go.
Right. So if we have a width limit, I mean, I don't think that would be, you know, unreasonable.
What would the width limit be? I mean, those lanes are 12 feet wide. There's no, what vehicle would you possibly put? Even a Humvee's not even that wide.
Well, we've had like.
Even C Street is a commercial vehicle route. So that's, that's a very.
So we've had farm equipment, because we are a farming community, that is extremely wide.
So combines and, oh, yeah, those are, for sure, yeah.
So I just, I wanted to make sure you understood that, that we would have to put a limit on what's on there.
Like the stuff we see in the Christmas parade, we see a lot of tractor trailers, you know, big floats on semis and stuff.
But I'm not saying, those would be excluded. We'd have to come up with public works, the size limitation on them, because I have seen farming equipment go through our parade that's, isn't going to go down C Street.
So we would, we would have to come up with a width limit?
Right.
Which would be more than reasonable. I mean, it would be a reasonable width limit.
But it'll be whatever.
It's not going to be, you're not going to allow, you're not going to allow a combine to come down or, you know, or something like that. But that's not.
That's a commercial vehicle. C Street, they commercial way to land, so.
Well, it's not a truck route, though. To Bonnie's point, though, you know, I did think about what you were saying about the logistics of people sitting on the other side and then whatever. So I drove down C today. And, you know, you don't really think about it a lot, but there's not as many medians in the middle as you think there is. There really is a lot of open.
Just that first.
It's like, well, but where F and M Bank is, it's totally open. Okay? And then you have a few scattered ones, and then you have, but it's really broken up. There really isn't a lot of, I mean, there's just, they're intermittent, but you don't have a ton. It's not like it's a solid whatever. And the trees and the plants, you know, I mean, later on in 10 years from now, those trees and everything we planted might start being more of a visual obstruction for people looking across. But I think right now it's not at all. I did think about that, and I drove it. I didn't think.
No, I don't think, I think if, I know they're not supposed to throw candy, but we know they do. It's when they do that and kids running, or people just crossing the street for a better view or to see someone or, you know, whatever. But I think that can be mitigated as well.
Well, I know, Mr. Pratt, and you kind of expressed your opinion, but you also said you were flexible.
I'm flexible, based on the additional input we got from the other businesses, which I hadn't heard before. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no to three. I'm prepared to vote.
Well, I, I think, you know, I think I'm glad that we kind of went all over the place with our, our differences. I was worried about that. But I do think that people are going to be very happy if we vote for three. I know, I know for staff, it'll be a little challenging. I do apologize. I know you guys really wanted four, and I know the police department was leaning towards that. And I get that that's their job to recommend the safest route, for sure. So, but, yeah.
To address Mr. Bro, one of Mr. Brosman's comments, it was, I actually had brought it up earlier with staff as well, of why we keep farming out this equipment and stuff. And so I don't know if anyone had time to see how much that would cost us, because it seems like if we're paying $30,000 or $25,000 each parade, that maybe, yeah, we could buy our.
I would, I would support that, too. I would like to see, I would like to see at some point a budget number brought back to see if we just bought our own barriers. Because, I mean, it might be more expensive to start, but in the long term, maybe it'd be better if we're going to do two parades every year. You know, that starts adding up. So I would like to look at that. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Oh, I'm down for that.
Yeah. So, well, then with that, I would.
And I, I just wanted to address Mr. Lee's comment real quick, because I know, because I've been involved, they, the city of Galt uses the CERT for almost every event. I see him out there all the time. I, I talk to him. They're here for the Fourth of July. They're here for Christmas. And they're here for almost every event. So they do use them already.
Question, Mr. Solis. If we were to go with option three, any thoughts on where you would do the flag at? Because I know the flag down there on Fourth Street down, kind of like in that intersection, has been pretty popular. People really liked that. Would you, and with the kind of, with the nuances with C, with all that, would it, would the flag, the big flag across stay down?
I can put it anywhere you want.
I just think it's been popular down there. It's like down by Velvet, I think, or kind of.
Right at the intersection of Fourth Street and D.
Yeah. Yeah. Anyways, I just like that. So, I mean, whatever. But with that, I would like to, so I would make a motion to approve Route Number Three, with the only caveat that we do have staff at some point come back with some cost analysis on purchasing barricades. It doesn't need to be before the Christmas parade, but at some point, maybe before we go to our next budget, I would like to know what that cost is, because I think it might be wise to look at that. Cost first, you know, labor, are using our own labor and buy our own barriers versus contracting them out continually. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I will do a second.
All right. Seconded by the Vice Mayor. I have a real call.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Prattton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Items approved five to zero. Thank you, everybody who gave us input on this. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to our next item. Last but most not least, very important, is our urgency ordinance regarding the bicycles, electric bicycles, motor scooters, and electrically motorized boards. Mr. Kalanowski.
I'll actually start it off, Mayor, and then Kalanowski will, he'll, he'll fix what I say wrong. This is an urgency ordinance that obviously the police department was interested in getting before the council. It's been an emerging issue, especially with the start of the school year. There's been complaints about just the use of them, the speeds, no helmets, that kind of thing. And it's, it's been raised by members of the community, school staff, and elected officials as well. This ordinance is an urgency ordinance, meaning that it only has to come to this council once, not twice. And if adopted tonight, it'll go into effect immediately. This ordinance covers various areas of concern to include the operational rules, safety requirements, penalties, enforcement. For example, it prohibits a lot of operational safety issues. And I'm just, a few of the many items is regulating speeds to not exceed 20 miles an hour, requires lights and reflectors, helmets, swerving around stopped or slow traffic, preventing lifting of one or more wheels, prohibiting use at certain areas, among other things. It also contains enforcement provisions, including fines and penalties consistent with our normal code enforcement mechanisms. And if needed, does have some impoundment provisions, allowing the Galt, if officer on occasion, in his or her discretion, to impound the bicycle. The findings that are needed to make this urgency ordinance, that they concern the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. Again, this is an emerging issue that not just the city of Galt is dealing with, but many cities, especially as the school year started around California with just high speeds and unsafe use of these. So this will hopefully protect the safety of, of the users of the electric bikes, as well as pedestrians and others that are using the roadway. This broadly covers electric bikes, electric, electrically motorized scooters, and electrically motorized skateboards and on all, in, in the public right of way. So happy to answer any questions, or if the chief has anything else to add.
No, I just mentioned that since six o'clock this morning, Corporal Steele has been here at work and is in attendance here to answer any specific enforcement questions, because it's been a hot minute since I've written a ticket. So, but I know he does it well. So we do have a resident expert in the building.
All right. Well, first, I just want to say thank you for the speed of the staff to get this before us. This has obviously been something kind of near and dear to my heart, because we've been talking about it at the cast meeting. We've been talking about the quality of life meeting, talk about it at council meetings, you know, a little bit here and there. Been talking about, I had Corporal Steele on my local podcast. Thank you, sir, for doing that, talking about this specific topic, and really just trying to educate people. Because I think one of the pieces of it is that a lot of parents just aren't educated on the rules and of these things. And they're so prevalent, and they're, it's only going to get more than, it's only going to get more, you know, more widely used. I mean, we're not, we're not by any means, the council trying to discourage the use of these devices. I think it's the future, and I think it's a great way for people to get around. And hopefully, we can, more people will use them, including adults, and we can get away from traffic congestion and stuff. But see, those bike lanes that people hate, they're going to really be useful at some point. But I just had a couple of questions specifically regarding the one-wheel-only thing. So, I mean, I know, is it, is it technically illegal, Officer Steele, to, to ride a bicycle, like to do a wheelie on a pedal, like a traditional pedal bicycle? I'm just curious, because that, when he said that, I kind of posed a question.
Sir, that's a good question. It depends on the context, like most things. I'm sure you've seen the viral videos of kids riding their bicycles down the middle of the road, hoisting a wheelie and weaving in and out, and like playing chicken with cars. It falls back to like a reckless operation type. So it would generally be at the discretion of the observing officer. If they see a 12-year-old riding a wheelie, and there's no cars around, and he's just having a good time, that is certainly not an enforcement action that I would be comfortable taking. If I see, earlier today, if I could relate a story, I was riding motorcycle down Corrillian. I know many people see me park on Marango and doing speed enforcement, which continues to be a pretty productive spot. I saw a boy, could have been 10 or 12 years old, riding his bicycle down Corrillian, southbound in the northbound lanes, no cars coming thankfully, and he was riding a wheelie and weaving in and out. And he almost took himself out of his own accord. He stopped, he collected himself in the median, and I stopped next to him. And I'm a parent, so I admonished him on the behavior and strongly encouraged him to get back over to the shoulder and make it home safely. So that is a behavior that could elicit a municipal code violation. And I think a municipal code might be a more effective means. I, I don't really see putting a child in the state, in the county traffic control system to be necessarily the most appropriate enforcement option. I think a municipal code would be a much easier.
So it kind of goes back to like what we had talked about when you and I spoke, is where, you know, there's a lot of language in here, but it really, a lot of it has to do with discretion. What we're trying to do is provide you guys with the most tools that you can to, to be able to do enforcement, should it be necessary. But again, I know that not new to our municipal code, but already existing, was that you're not supposed to technically ride a bicycle, you know, just a regular bicycle on the sidewalk. But if you're going down Corrillian Boulevard and you see, you know, a family, and you see a seven or eight-year-old girl riding her bicycle on the sidewalk there, you're not going to, because you're, they understand the parent doesn't want the bike kid in the, in the bike lane next to traffic. And so there's that, there's that discretion that you guys have. So, so I think when people read this language and they get, you know, fired up, like, oh, my God, it says this or that. I don't think that there is still some flexibility at the discretion of the officers. But I can tell you, that is a big problem. I had a bus driver for the high school district contact me yesterday, said that he had a kid that was playing chicken with him doing wheelies, and he had to lock up the brakes on the bus. And one of his, he's transport special needs. And one of the kids was in a wheelchair, and the wheelchair went flying forward. And luckily, they weren't injured bad, but, and he was pretty upset. He sent me a long message about it. And he like took video of the kids and wanted me to pass it to PD and all that. And so it's a real, it's a real thing. I mean, there's some recklessness going on out there. So, yeah, I read through it. I think it's good. And I know it was heavily vetted by, you know, obviously by our attorneys and the police department to make sure that there wasn't anything in there that they didn't think was unenforceable or would be a gray area. This is becoming a big deal, people. For those of you who don't know, it really is. I mean, I went on a rabbit hole researching this topic before I had the officers on the show. And there has literally been cities where people have been, pedestrians have been killed. It's not even auto-related stuff. It's pedestrians, kids riding these things down the sidewalks going 15, 16 miles an hour or more, and hitting pedestrians. I had somebody message me today from Galt and said that their cousin is in the hospital because they got hit by an e-bike just, just recently in the last 48 hours, and they were hospitalized. So I got a message from someone. So this is needed. And I'm glad we're being proactive because the last thing we want to do is, is, you know, look a citizen in the eye who, you know, has a child injured or, you know, and for, you know, hopefully not killed. not killed. And we have to look them and go and they say, well, why didn't you do more? And we could say, well, we didn't do anything. I mean, that because those things can still happen. But at least we can say we did this and we did that. And we're being trying to be as proactive as possible and not reactive. And afterward, something bad happens. So again, I support this as it's written. I think it's great. I'm glad that we're taking the lead. And when other cities are still struggling to get things in place. So, yeah. Anybody else want to comment?
I have a couple of questions for the gentleman in blue. Have we seen an increase in incidences related to like accidents over the last few years related to these vehicles, if you will?
Yes. I respond to every vehicle accident, bicycle, pedestrian, scooter that happens while I'm on duty. It's a part of my assignment. And yes, I have seen an uptick in accidents involving electric bikes and electric scooters.
Because I saw one dropping off my kid on Friday on my way home, right at the corner of Elk Hills and Walnut. A little girl was sitting on the side of the road because I don't know exactly what happened, but she had been riding a bicycle. And PD was already there and the firemen were already running across the street. So it I agree, it's it's becoming a bigger issue. And just driving to and from dropping my kid off at Liberty and all I do is stay on Marengo. And it's like playing Frogger sometimes, trying not to hit some of these kids that just decide that they're the ones that rule the road and not the big vehicle that we're driving.
And on that point, so as the school year started, obviously, this was a hot topic that carried over from last spring as we were wrapping up the school year. We've instituted sort of a formal warning citation process where we if we issue a written warning to an individual, we get the parent's name and number and make contact with the parent. And in September through today's date, we've issued 36 warning citations. So that work is part of the education and the outreach. Obviously, you saw Corporal Steele do some work related to our social media program and the education more to the adults in the social media world. And then we had one of our SROs as part of the youth services program. And I even think Detective Franklin was out there with the bike unit at one point at least, right? Yeah, doing the presentations. And so we've given 40 school presentations to over 1,700 students. So I know sometimes when the topic goes, they're like, what? And so what has the police department done? I would answer that this staff has done incredible work to launch this in the month of September and get everybody on board and incrementally ramp up the process through education, warnings, formal warnings, and then ultimately citations. And somebody might ask me of the five of you what those citations might be. So I will save her from the question. And so, you know, your first citation, you're subject to $100 fine. And if you have a second citation within a year, it's 200 or it can go to 500. The other thing with the municipal code, different than citing for the vehicle code is alluded to by the corporal, it gives us some discretion as a police department to divert kids into our diversion program and let them work through an education process and maybe writing something or doing something in some fashion based on how we design that to allow them to correct for their behavior versus, you know, the parents paying the $100 fine.
Chain gang?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, maybe that's at the third one.
They can move the barriers for the for the parades.
No, they have to stand there so they don't get moved.
So, you know, obviously, everything's not going to result in a citation. We have no problem enforcing the law or taking action or as alluded to before, running towards danger. We do it 24/7. But the idea here is to educate and provide the enforcement that's necessary, but not make it a revenue stream issue. And then lastly, we did buy a number of helmets. And so if we have proof of financial hardship, similar to like we've done with the Christmas gift giveaway and things where somebody does not have a helmet but needs to use the equipment, we have the capacity to issue a helmet so they're in compliance. So I feel like we've done a 360 sort of wraparound approach on this. And I think this is the last piece of that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say thanks for going out to the schools because I remember picking my son up that day and saying, hey, how did school go? What did you learn? He didn't say anything about math. He didn't say anything about science. The police department came and told me all about these bikes and the rules and that now I'm not 16, so I can't ride this certain one and this and that. He knew all of it. I don't remember any of it. But he it stood it stood out. So it did make an effect on the kids. So I appreciate that.
Yes. Well, and with that said, with Tim, I do think that the only the only additional ask that I think would be helpful is, again, the school thing was super important. And thank you for doing that. I mean, I'm sure the school district appreciates it, too. I do think in what I'm talking to people is there's still, you know, there's these parents that are that are they're getting noticed now because when kid little Johnny comes home with one of those 36 and he's like, hey, I got this thing. But I think the parents are buying their kids these things, not knowing the rules. And so how do we educate the parents? And so I think because obviously, we all know that you guys have the most heavy reach on social media as the police department with 20 some thousand followers. I think maybe just a few more, you know, good, great videos, especially with the e-dur bikes. The e-dur bikes concerns me the most because I've seen those and they're literally just, you know, they're going. I had one go by me on the C Street overpass doing a wheelie by me. And by the time we got on the other side of Bossow, he was already ahead of me and I couldn't even keep up with him when I was doing 50 miles an hour. I mean, it was going literally going through town. So I mean, that's complete. And something like that, I wouldn't even like, I would be like, just give them a fine. Don't even there's no education needed. That's just ridiculous. But but I think, you know, if you know, one of your great videos you guys do where it's like if it doesn't have pedals, it's not a bicycle, so it's not allowed. I think education that the parents are cruising Facebook or whatever and they see that, I think that would still be additionally helpful because we need to get the message in those parents' heads. They can't buy these things for their kids. So other than that, I think the effort's been great.
What about, you know, because what do parents do? They pay the bills, right? So what about looking into inserting a mailer into the city bill as well? Because the parents are going to look at that, right? Because they're going to have to pay the bill. What about thinking about maybe doing that?
We can look at that or the newsletter. So I can talk to staff in our weekly meetings, you know, that they would have that available.
Talk about the municipal code that we just put in and and then and then also talk about the language and the rules and the.
And we do, you know, obviously, we do a public safety, one of the Saturday markets. And we do bicycle safety, but we can start embedding, you know, the other components like the e-bikes and the things we're talking about. So.
Yeah, I think it's weird. It's like these parents, it's like they think if it's electric powered, that it's literally exempt from all rules. That's the perception that I've got from people. It's like they just think, oh, it's electric. It doesn't have to just outside of all the parameters. It's just so bizarre. Anyways, but do we have any public comment on this?
Ken Lee.
Hello, I'm Ken Lee. I'd like to see that they enforce the bicycle license. I got a license for my bicycle. That way, when they go in, they can pick up the brochure, too. and they need to put more bike racks in the city, you know, like the flea market entrances, the shopping centers. And they need to have live cameras on it because people are scared of getting those things stolen. And what about liability insurance? Because those can cause a lot of damage to your car when they smack into it. And, you know, property damage and they can run over go through your doors. And they physically run down people. And how who covers that medical coverage? Medical coverage is very expensive. They need more bike educational literature. And they need to have a minimum height on how how tall those are. My neighbor was riding one real low and you couldn't see her. She got smacked up into the air, had head injuries, hip injuries, just by getting hit on F Street and Third. And so because she was riding one that's so low, looked like a clown clown electric vehicle. So you can't have one that low where you can't even see the person on the bike. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. All right. Well, if we don't have any further public comment, no, and there's no further discussion, I'd be looking for a motion to adopt and waive a further reading of urgency ordinance of the City of Council of City of Galt, California by four-fifth vote, amending Chapter 10.44 of the Galt Municipal Code relating by regulating bicycles, electric bicycles, motorized scooters, and electrically motorized boards. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Reed. I will second it. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Approved five to zero. I do have one additional quick question, Mr. Steele. And I apologize to bring this up. Somebody did ask me that said they didn't see any language in there about golf carts because we already have language in our code regarding that kind of thing.
So golf golf carts, to the best of my knowledge, aren't covered in the municipal code. They're covered rather explicitly in the California vehicle code.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have any communication this evening?
None.
Comments by staff?
Public Works Director John Griffin. Good evening, May Vice Mayor. Councilmembers, three quick information items. First, as discussed on item J6, Simmerhorn Road has been closed for construction. It will be closed through October 17. It's closed from Steiner Road to Marengo Road. Item two is SAICOG is currently accepting applications for the 2025 Regional Project Prioritization Program. And staff's met public work staff met with SAICOG staff on September 30 to discuss this funding opportunity. And we will be submitting a grant application for the Walnut Avenue Interchange Project. Applications are due on Friday, October 24. And lastly, construction of the Corleone Deep, Deepwell Test Well is scheduled to begin on October 13 and expected to run through the end of the calendar year. Some phases of work, I'm sorry, some phases of construction will require 24 hour operation. And those tentative dates are October 21 through November 4 and November 17 through December 5. We've sent mailers to all residents within 750 feet of the project site informing them of the pending construction and potential noise and light issues.
Mr. Griffin, can you maybe tell the public why it's Simmerhorn? What are they doing on the Simmerhorn? A lot of people are asking me.
So Simmerhorn Road, that is part of the construction for the Elliott Ranch subdivision project. They are working on the sewer main that will be installed along Simmerhorn. And then they will be repaving both the northbound and the east and westbound lanes from Steiner to Marengo.
Thank you.
And Mayor Council, just a quick reminder, I will not be at the next council meeting. Assistant manager, city manager, Amy Mendez will be in my place.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Lastly, we'll have comments by staff and future agenda items. Mr. Pratton, do you have anything?
Just wanted to thank you for getting that done so quickly, the e-bike stuff. It kind of started not too long ago, right? I mean, it was at the cast meeting. And the next cast meeting, we'll be able to to show that this has been accomplished. So it's good. I will be attending the conference for the League of California Cities the next three days. If anybody's got anything they want me to look for or be involved in or anything in particular. One of the reasons we signed up for that was to have somebody there to vote. And it looks like they don't have anything to vote on. I'm all set up to go. They do have classes throughout, so I will try to, you know, attend and and talk to others as much as possible. So something could be put on there. They're going to let us know on Thursday. But one other thing, I did attend the market this last weekend, the Saturday market. Director Griffin was there and looked like he had a great presentation there. So I didn't get a chance to follow up and find out how was the crowd?
I thought the crowd was very well attended. Of course, nobody was really interested in all of the bacteria and wastewater.
Darn it. Good information. I just I was there very and there wasn't very many people there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you for this staff, all the report, all the hard work. Thank you for the public comment. Public comment is very important for me. I believe all the all the council. Thank you for everybody coming to this council meeting. I'm also not I'm not going to that California city. I was a as an alternate, but I talked to staff. I don't need to go. So I'm not going. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Reed?
First, thank you for all of your reports and all your hard work for the staff. One of the things that I wanted to address that I forgot to address when we were talking about the scooter thing is, and we kind of touched on it, right? I just want to put it out there that the parents in this city need to do a better job at doing their job, right? We can't put it all on the kids to make sure that they follow the rules and do all this if they don't know what the rules are, right? So we, being parents, need to start stepping up and doing better at our job so that the kids can do better at being kids, right? There wasn't much better way to say that, but I couldn't remember how to do it. So. And I think that's it. There was something else I was going to talk about it. I totally forgot.
All right, you're off your soapbox now.
Yeah.
Good job. Ms. Rodriguez?
I just have to say I'm glad my kids are adults and they have to pay for their own problems. But I also attended the Saturday market. I swear everyone I go to, they just get better and better. Just they're just so great. Staff is awesome. And her name just left me, the new market manager.
Venicia.
Okay, that's why I don't remember. What's her last name?
You expect me to know that?
Okay. No, that makes me feel much better now. But I had a little encounter with her. She's wonderful. Just an FYI for PD. The reason why she and I had an interaction was because there were four kids playing on the train track at C Street, just running up and down it. And I was looking around for a uniformed officer, didn't see anyone and didn't want to make a big deal. But I had discussed it with her and she actually ended up walking over there. I warned her, though, because there was an adult, I think one of a father, who went over there with them and, you know, whatever. So again, parents making better decisions are better examples for their children. So during these markets, we might want to just at least glance over to those railroad crossings, probably both A, but especially C, and make sure that the kids are they were having a great time, you know? And no train came, obviously, and I just hoped that they would get out of the way if and when it came and didn't trip or, you know, anyway. But the market was great. I always love going. We go early to beat the heat and just it's they're just wonderful. So thank your staff. They do an amazing job.
And her last name is Leslie.
Leslie. Well, that's much easier to remember.
Venicia Leslie.
Venicia Leslie. I just want to know if we have a timeline on our new, I guess, design codes or anything like that? Do we have? Did that get discussed?
Chris and I were talking about that today.
We don't have a timeline per se. Right now, we're looking at a couple of neighboring cities or similar sized jurisdictions, for examples, to see if we can complete them in house versus using a consultant. So it is the top of our priority list. I just don't have an exact estimate for you, but we are hoping to keep it in house and just do something fairly quickly within the next, you know, three to four months type thing. But no, no exact date.
I appreciate that. I part of the reason I bring it up is because that was another topic of discussion at that retreat was everybody complaining. And surprisingly, Elk Grove doing a lot of the complaining for their affordable housing that they've approved and gone up and a lot of at least one of the larger developments was planned to have balconies and, you know, kind of look nice and everything. And by the time it got built, there were no balconies. And he said, it looks like the projects. So, you know, it's not just us having issues with with developers skipping steps or doing what they want, I guess. And just an FYI, we do have this in two weeks, Thursday, October 23, will be an unmet transit needs meeting here in the chambers. It's at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. I know that most people are working. They're probably on a commuter bus at 1 o'clock. But it's here. They will have another meeting on Zoom at 6 o'clock on the 27. And I think I'm going to send that off and we can maybe get it up on our social media. And this is a time for people if they have concerns about transit issues or and this isn't. And um, this is a time for people, if they have concerns about um, transit issues or, uh, and this isn't put three lanes on ninety nine, unfortunately. I wish we could have one of those meetings. But this is if we, if you feel like we're missing the mark with, maybe we need an extra commuter bus or more in town or going somewhere else, going down more south or something like that. So that will be here again on October twenty third at one PM. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Well, I'm not going to go into the, uh, too much on the other stuff that you guys already mentioned. So market was great. Thank you staff for everything we did tonight on the, on the e-bike thing. What I want to bring up is something different. This is a future agenda item. It was going to be more of a question, but I think I'm going to ask for an agenda item instead based on my conversation with Frank. And so uh, what this is regarding is, it has become very apparent to me, I mean, it's not a secret. It's been going on for many years. But um, the corridor passing through Galt on the highway ninety nine has become what I would consider a clear and present danger to the safety of the city of Galt. My daughter was in a severe car accident a week ago yesterday. She actually was in surgery earlier today and she just got home from, as a result of that. Um, I had another daughter was in an accident off Simmerhorn on ninety nine a few years ago. As a matter of fact, Mr. Pratton said his niece was in a car accident on ninety nine this morning, at eight thirty this morning. And there was another one at three o'clock in the afternoon on ninety nine. It has become, based on the data that provided me by CSD, there is basically an accident that requires medical attention every two days on the ninety nine corridor between Fairway and Twin Cities. This isn't even Liberty. This isn't Arno, Mango. And, and this doesn't include CHP, which responds to a lot that don't even require medical attention. So I have taken upon myself, my new crusade, now that the e-bike thing has seemed to be gone, is and this is, this is a much bigger thing to tackle, but I feel like we need to start putting a lot of pressure on this, the people outside of our bubble to um, consider when are the improvements to ninety nine going to happen? We have hook ramps that are bad. We have two lanes of traffic. When Elk Grove has three, south of Lodi, they have three. It's becoming a huge occurrence for us. Um, and since I've been watching it, I can't believe how many accidents there is. Ms. Rodriguez mentioned that at Secog, was it Secog meeting? That you're sitting next to the Caltrans person and they actually acknowledged to, they understand there's a problem in this area with the road. So they're already, they're already apprised to that. I think now would be the best time to start putting maximum pressure. So what I would like to see is if you guys would indulge me with an agenda item as soon as possible to have a letter drafted by staff to go to all the people that we think would be relevant. Caltrans, uh, you know, our state representatives on all levels that would have anything to do with such things. I do have a meeting with Roger Nilo in two weeks and I have a meeting with Supervisor Hume on this very topic that I will do myself. But I would like that letter to be drafted to those, to all those bodies. And I also would like staff to see if they could get a PRA, if it's a PRA for you guys, I don't know, but from CHP data. I would like CHP data for last year. I, I would like that letter to be armed with data. So not only the CSD data, which I can already provide staff because I have it, but the CHP data, which I don't have, I would like that data to be uncompromising, be a part of that letter. Okay?
Sounds good.
Um, so if we could bring that back as an agenda item, or it doesn't need to be or whatever, but I would like to start with that and then we can see where this goes.
Would you be okay with just coming back with a letter for your consideration?
Sure. And we can put on the consent. Yeah. But I would like it to include that data so it's as most powerful as it can be. So. And I would like it to go to, I don't even know the agencies it would go to, but you guys know that stuff. I don't. But whoever would be relevant. And if we could even get, uh, if we could even get uh, CSD to NP, you know, anybody else to say, yes, we agree with this letter, like the fire, the fire chief to say that this letter, you know, something accompanying our letter from fire chief is saying, yes, we, we respond to an exorbitant amount of, and it's a danger and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, depending on timing, I, I certainly could uh, reach out to the uh, CSD general manager to get his support. Uh, I know we're, the two by two with them is going to be a little bit of time off.
Well, I mean, I'm sure if you reached out to Joe Mander or even the chief, they could probably get something to you very quickly. Even if it's just a, you know, even if it's just his consent to, to put language in that says that our fire department, CSD also has, you know, something, right? So I would appreciate that. So is, is, are you, are we fine with that?
Hundred percent beside.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, with that, I'm not going to belabor the meeting any longer, so I'm going to gen, genize this, or genize, sorry.
Dismissed.
Adjourn the meeting at nine seventeen.